All right. Good afternoon. I am calling the retreat this afternoon to order. Today is December 16th, 2020. And City Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Mayor DC.
President.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoni.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Thank you. I would like to have our Vice Mayor Daggett, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It would be my honor. Hold on just a second. Now, how do we do this with viewing and I guess you won't be able to see me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I'd like to pass the torch on to City Manager Clifton.
Thank you, Mayor DC. Council greetings. Greetings to everybody. We have a bit of a larger audience this afternoon. I expect that a few others will be trickling in. For the benefit of everybody, the council retreated this morning and had a wonderful team building, a series of team building sessions facilitated by Julie Lancaster, who I will be introducing in just a second. And we were also honored to have a former mayor Bavasi come in and offer some comments. It was great. That was pretty much just council by themselves, even though it was streamed. This afternoon is a little bit more, is a bigger audience and a little bit more participatory. We are going to shift gears. And if I may, at this point, I'm going to take the shared screen, if that's okay, and put up a PowerPoint. And in just a second, here we go. I'm going to start from the beginning. I'll check in real fast. I can no longer see the chat column, but would somebody tell me if this is visible?
It is visible, yes. And I'll let you know if there's anything that jumps into the comment section while you speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start out with an introduction and let our facilitator speak a little bit as to the intention part of this. She will have less of a role this afternoon, but I have asked her, and she has graciously agreed to try to keep us on task and on time, and also to monitor for questions and comments, and she'll go through some of that protocol. Julie Lancaster is the founder of Lancaster Consulting, and many of us have heard of that group. I'd like to chat a little bit about her background, which I find rather amazing. She has a rock climbing background and actually has been an instructor for many years. I want to circle back to that in a second. She also has, along with that, had involvement with outdoor education. She's been a director with Outdoor Ed. She has had involvement as a school garden director, African Extension Agent. She's a professor and notably has been recognized in her capacity as an adjunct professor quite honorably. She's been a Director of Career Services, and with great emphasis on education, including a master's degree in education, she has served as Dean of Education. Julie, I don't mind sharing with you that in terms of your rock climbing background, in a previous jurisdiction, when I lived in Telluride, I had the great honor of getting to know another female mountaineer who has some claim to fame because she was the first female mountaineer, to my knowledge, to have ascended both Everest and the neighboring over 8,000 meter peak Los, and did both of those within a 24-hour period. I make comment of that now because, like you, she was very accomplished with her mountaineering skills, but she also was an author, and she is an author, and also does a lot in terms of leadership coaching like herself. So I would have to say that rock climbing as a background probably lends itself very well to what you do. At any rate, you can comment on that, but I would like to introduce you to this wonderful group that we have, and I'll let you speak for a bit and set the framework for today's, or this afternoon's discussion. Thanks, Julie.
Great. Thank you so much. It's so wonderful to be here with all of you. I'm delighted to see you, even though I can just see a select, select few of you. Let's get started, shall we? Greg, is there anything else that you would like to share before, before I kick off with what our plan is and more on that?
No, take it away, please.
Okay, wonderful. Well, ready, everybody? Here we go. Here's the plan. We're here together until 4:30 today. We have a lot of wonderful presentations. To start, I'm going to ask that for each person who presents, that you share in two words about your personality, about who you are, because we want to get to know you as a person as well as a presenter. So keep that in mind for people who are presenting throughout the day. So you see the agenda here. My role, and please forgive me, I'm going to ask permission to give you a five-minute warning before your time is finished. I'm also going to give you a one-minute warning, and if you're having trouble wrapping up in that one minute, I'm going to help you, just to keep us on time and guided. Also, what we are demonstrating and focusing on during this time is a bit of time management. So we are going to walk our talk, and we're really going to hold to the timelines. Sometimes it's hard to do, to be more concise, to follow the time guidelines, but we are definitely going to do that. I will be sure to keep an eye on the chat. So whoever you are, whenever you're presenting, anybody who has a question, please put the letter Q into the chat. If you have a comment, please put the letter C into the chat, and I will hopefully, in a tactful way, interrupt when you're taking a breath, whoever you are who's presenting, and say, there's a comment or there's a question. Now, for those of you who are going to then audibly ask a question or give a comment, we are going to ask that you are laser focused. Please no backstory. Please no commentary on your comment or your question. You've got one sentence essentially, please, just to keep us in line, and I know you'll all appreciate that. When we're getting started, can we try for a moment to have folks, if you feel appropriate that you can do this, to show your video just for a moment so we can see folks? Hopefully, we won't break the system. And so we can all say a warm hello to each other, and we should be able to see, everyone should be able to see a band of people down below. We can wave to each other and say a nice hello. The timeline for our first section, just as an FYI, the overview of city governance is going to be from 1:15 until 1:45, and then Sterling, at 1:45, you'll be on until 2:45. And then, just so everyone's aware, we'll then have a break from 2:45 until 3 o'clock. I'm going to ask for you each to also think about your intention for the next three hours and 20 minutes that we're together, how you want to be, how you want to show up right now. Would you mind, this is the only time that I'm going to ask for you to put a comment into the chat. Other times, you're going to be sharing a comment on the presentation or a question for the presentation, just as a cue or a see. Will everyone put their, put their intention right now into the comment? One word, how you want to show up for the next three hours? You got six more seconds. Beautiful. Keep them coming. Oh, yeah. Look at that. This is also testing that you're competent and comfortable using the chat. Oh, these are beautiful, aren't they? Take a look at what everybody's saying. With that, I'm going to encourage you to be present. I know it's easy to multitask when we are watching things on the computer. I'm going to encourage you to just stay focused, engaged, open, interested. These are wonderful. So thank you so much for joining us here together. Let's start by learning about the overview of city governance. It'll be a bit about the interplay of policy administration and law, as well as home rule, the city charter, and the city code. If you are going to be learning a lot, I encourage you to take notes because this is going to be a riveting presentation. So please, take it away.
Thank you, Julie. Can you see my video okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. And can you see this cursor?
Yes.
Excellent. Riveting? I'm not sure, but we'll do our best. This is the agenda this afternoon. Julie just walked us through it. The first part of this is an overview. By the way, the entire afternoon is kind of very high-level stuff and purposefully set up that way. We're not going to get into the weeds too much here this afternoon, but we hope you find this very interesting. As we talked about-
City Manager Clifton, if you wouldn't mind sharing two words on-
Two words about myself? Yes, yes. In fact, of course, I, I don't have to find them. They're still in my mind. Two words that I would describe myself with, conscientious and deliberate. And everybody's thinking right now, yeah, what's up with that?
No, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. The interplay of policy administration and law, I'm going to touch on that, and I'm going to have our esteemed legal counsel chat a little bit about home rule and the city charter, and that will segue nicely into his legal overview that follows. But as we talk about the interplay of policy administration and law, it serves us well to be thinking of these three things as three spheres, three circles that do connect. But I'm going to back up and share with you that initially, many years ago, in fact, over 100 years ago, the whole idea of city administration came into existence. And when that happened, there was a lot of school of thought at the time, and probably for the next half a century, that there was this separation of the two spheres between policy and admin, that they functioned autonomously, and there was, there was no overlap between the two. That, of course, is a dichotomy over time, and there's been a lot of legal scholars who have spoken to this, and I do not want to belabor, but the more accepted model has become something that is depicted in front of you now, where you have a significant overlap between policy and administration. But that's not enough. As we march through time, and especially in this day and age, with such a reliance upon the legal arena, and you think about everything we do here at city governance, and it's hard to imagine any one topic, any one issue, that doesn't have a very significant legal component to it. You, we come to appreciate that there's actually a model that is now depicted where you have a significant overlap of policy, administration, and legal. And by and large, since you can't see my cursor, we operate here in the middle. There's overlap in the many, many things we talk about, and we'll show some examples here in just a second, where, where we are talking about things in the policy arena, we're chatting about them from an administrative standpoint, and certainly we're hearing from our legal advisors as to the legal parameters. So what are some examples? If we were to think about some areas of overlap, and this is by no means an exhaustive list, pardon me, for that. I'm trying to scroll through my PDF to advance my slides so I know what to talk about on the next frame. The areas of overlap, here are some examples. We, we'll be talking a little bit today and a lot tomorrow about community priorities. A great example of where there's a strong interplay of all of these components, the budget, of course, is a prime example. Council has significant involvement in that, as does staff. Pardon me for that. Public outreach and response, capital planning and infrastructure, economic development, community development, community programs, social justice, crisis response, something that we can speak to with familiarity these days. All of these things involve a significant overlap. And then conversely, if we were to think about areas that, where there might be a little bit more autonomy or a little less overlap, I would offer up these examples. And again, it's not an exhaustive list. But in the personnel arena, we, in the administrative sphere, pretty much deal with that one exclusively. A great example that is pending is the police chief recruitment. Our city council does not have much involvement in that. They certainly have a high level of interest. Our legal team does not have a lot of involvement in that, even though they've, they've shared a couple of seats at the, in the review panels. So there's a good example of where there is some exercise autonomy. Administrative processes, much of the same comment. With respect to the legal sphere, and Sterling will be chatting about some of these things later on, but certainly it goes without saying that when we are seeking legal advice, the attorneys, the legal department is operating somewhat autonom, actually quite autonomously, and they're not sharing that advisement with, with other influences. The same is true with the legal proceedings. Then if we were to talk about the policy sphere, and all of these will be diving deeper into this afternoon, certainly, policy matters and policy decisions lie within the sphere of the city council as the legislative or elected body. So those are some examples, and that's just kind of a little visual to kind of frame the discussion that follows. I want to make note of the current landscape that we operate within. And at the risk of maybe getting a little bit into some academia here, which I don't intend to do, I'm going to suggest to you that things have really changed. Not only my earlier comment about the, the origin, the genesis of the manager, the council manager form of government. In, in more recent decades, we've been seeing this new federalism that has occurred, whereby there's been a greater reliance placed upon local government. And I'm specifically referring to not just municipalities, but counties, districts, school districts, special districts, and the like. Over the last half a century, a much greater and significant emphasis being placed upon local governments. And we see that. And Sterling is going to talk to you at length about home rule this afternoon, which is very important. And under the whole premise of home rule is the idea of operating with a little bit more autonomy, a little bit more self-governance, and with that, more responsibilities. It is a parallel to the comment I just made, which is this greater reliance upon local government to do things. It goes, it, it serves the comments well to note some things that have really evolved recently to illustrate that point, which would be the increased expectations by our citizenry upon things that they want their local governments to address. A great example of that recently, COVID and the pandemic, where we are placing great reliance upon our county, a little bit of some reliance upon our state to provide us that information to help with the programs, the testing, the resources, the many, many nuances that we are now seeing with respect to navigating through this pandemic. A huge reliance at the local level. There are greater constraints placed upon us as well, even with these increased expectations. We have our budgetary constraints, obviously, but generally speaking, a scarcity of resources. There's much more reliance upon social programs. There's more reliance upon our ownership and operation of utilities and infrastructure, and many things that, quite frankly, have not traditionally fallen within the wheelhouse of local government. Let me illustrate with a graphic, and I'm going to conclude with this and allow our city attorney to chat with you a little bit about home rule, and this is a great segue into home rule. You see here a pie chart. I've used this in, in presentations like this before, and I, a little disclaimer, this is some dated information now, probably by about four or five years, maybe more, but it doesn't matter. The numbers aren't what's relevant here. What's relevant is the, the graphic itself, which depicts the rather astonishing breakdown of local governments with, with numbers, again, that are dated, where you see 36,500 municipalities, this is nationwide, about 3,000 counties, that, that probably has not changed. Special districts and school districts, which, like municipalities, have grown. And I'll also share with you this as a segue into home rule. Home rule governance has grown. When I was back in Colorado, I had the privilege and opportunity to be working with the city of Urae, a small mountain town, even though they go by the name of city. It's kind of a, a term that doesn't really depict the population or the size of the municipality. But while we were there, while I was there, the city of Urae became the 99th city within the state of Colorado, and there's about 293 municipalities in Colorado. They were the 99th one to become home rule. Now, that number has since grown. And another interesting statistic is that, at least with respect to Colorado, and I don't yet have a great feel for Arizona, but 93, 94% of the entire population in the state lived within home rule governance. The point being that it is a reflection of this new federalism that has happened, whereby there's much greater reliance upon us at the local governance level to, to govern. Sterling, are you ready to take over and chat a little bit about home rule, and then we can segue into your legal stuff?
Absolutely. I'm ready to go ahead and talk about home rule, a number of different definitions for home rule, and then segue into my legal stuff. I appreciate that, Greg. I want to go ahead and share my screen in getting started. We will go ahead and present this one. And I want to make sure, are you all seeing the city council retreat, city attorney slide?
Yes, we are.
Excellent. So quickly, as Julie has indicated, I'm going to go ahead and introduce myself, Sterling Solomon. I'm the city attorney. I'll get to the two words in here just a second. I want to make sure everyone understands the topics that I will be going over today. First, as Greg mentioned, home rule, and I'm going to touch on expenditure limitation with respect to that, and then the broader definition of home rule, which gets us into our city charter, and the fact that Flagstaff is a chartered city, not a general law city. We'll go through the city code and the fact that that really is where the rubber meets the road when it comes to the specific regulations that the city of Flagstaff has. We'll also talk about a couple of other things that will be of great interest to you. As I go through the charter, you will find I touch mostly on the things that you deal with on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis, not on more of the broader yearly basis. The charter has many different aspects to it, but we will get into really what you deal with. That is meetings, open meetings. We'll talk about the public hearing process. We'll talk about conflict of interest laws under, under state law, and we'll also talk about your local rules of procedure. And again, I, I really appreciated the one-sentence advisement from Julie as far as questions that might come up. This will be very high-level. I will not be going into a deep dive today on any of this. Instead, I will get back to you with individual trainings, especially for the incoming council members and Indian, any individual refreshers that you as returning council members have a request for, I can provide that. So again, Sterling Solomon, I'm the city attorney. If I were to choose two words to describe me, maybe it's more of an attempt of what I try to be in these two words, but quiet dignity would be those two words. So one of the definitions, a very specific definition of home rule, deals with finances, the alternative expenditure limitation. I want to make sure that everyone is clear that the Arizona Constitution, dealing with revenue and expenditures, was amended way back in 1980, and it set a standard state formula on expenditure limits. There are only two options to adjust those standards, that standard, standard limit, excuse me. The purpose for this, obviously, the voters approved this to prevent cities from exceeding their budget. You will hear this term "home rule" thrown out with respect to this specific issue. The constitutional provisions, again, allow two options for an adjustment to that standard state formula expenditure limitation. The first option is not what Flagstaff does. It's called the home rule. It's an alternative expenditure limitation that voters have to reapprove every four years. The other option, under which Flagstaff does operate, is that the voters approve it. It is a permanent base adjustment, we refer to it as. The voters automatically, or excuse me, it's approved by the voters, and then it automatically gets adjusted going forward without the need for further voter approval. For example, in August of this year, city voters did approve a permanent base adjustment of $4 million. We have to stay within that permanent base adjustment. That's one definition of home rule, but I want to get more to what Greg was referring to, and that's going to come under the charter. I want to commend previous councils that I've worked with here in the city of Flagstaff. The eye toward local governance, the concern for local authority, local jurisdiction, the ability to maintain local control has been something that I think most of the previous councils I have worked with have exhibited, and I feel this council, just from what I've seen so far, even though we only met last night, some of the discussions I've had indicate to me that you two are going to be very concerned and desire us to maintain as much home rule authority as we can. Here in the state of Arizona, not all cities are home rule cities. Flagstaff's constitution essentially is our city charter. It provides a very tailor-made, if you will, set of laws governing you as the city council, our form of city government, which is a council manager form of government. As you see there, the council makes the policy decisions. We are, again, not a general law city, just governed by the, the laws of the state of Arizona. We have our own specific tailor-made, again, I like to refer to it, quote unquote, as our own constitution for the city of Flagstaff. Council in making those policy decisions also appoints a city manager to implement those policies. The city manager administers the city government in the process of implementing those policies. And council, in that interchange, there is some overlap, as you see. Council does not direct city staff. This is called the non-interference clause in, in, you know, some city charters, where council members work through the city manager to, to reach out to division heads or section heads within the city of Flagstaff. And that is a very well-known, well-operating form of government through many cities in Arizona and throughout the country. As Greg said, it's developed over the years, and many people use this form of government. It works well. Under the charter, you as the council also appoint two additional positions, the city attorney, as well as the city magistrate. City magistrate is referred to as the police judges in the city charter. But those are the three positions that you appoint, city manager, city attorney, and city magistrate. You also appoint boards and commissions. I think this is another excellent example of home rule. You want to have boards and commissions who can reach out to the community, reach out to the public, and serve in an advisory role as they bring back to you any questions, concerns with respect to those specific boards and commissions that they sit on. Those boards and commissions report only to you. They, too, are obligated by the open meeting laws that I'll discuss more in a, in a little while here, but that is all part of a home rule functioning council manager form of government. City manager also makes all the other hiring decisions. He prepares the agenda, prepares the budget. There are quite a few things outlined in Article 3, Section 3 of the city charter, where the powers and duties of the city manager are outlined. Council powers and duties are outlined in Article 2 of the city charter, and one of those points is four or more of you constitute a quorum of the city council, and you cannot meet or act as a public body with less than four. You have to have at least four to have a quorum and to, to act. Obviously, each of you are entitled to one vote. I've been battling with Councilmember McCarthy. I say that tongue-in-cheek. He's been wanting to use two thumbs for two votes for a long time, and he's jokingly saying that. Obviously, each of you just gets one vote. The mayor is the ceremonial head of the city, presides over all of the city council meetings, and he may make in second motions and vote, obviously, in the meetings as well. There are certain emergency powers or declaration of emergency by proclamation that the mayor may engage in, both under state law, which is also confirmed under our city charter and city code. Council meetings are where decisions are made. Again, if you go back up to that first point, four or more of you constitute a quorum, and that's where the business is discussed under open meeting laws, which I will address more briefly here. But those policies and laws are created by resolutions and ordinances respectively. And when, you know, ordinances are created, they go into the city code. They're codified, and I'll touch on that a little more here when we get to the city code portion. Moving on to how city council meetings function, they are provided for, as you see the charter sections or articles and sections referred to here. There are general meetings, special meetings, and we also have executive sessions, which I'll touch on during open meeting law. That is actually a special meeting where we go into executive session, and there's always the option to go into executive session if there is the catch-all for legal advice posted as part of the agenda. So these general meetings and special meetings are scheduled specifically pursuant to rules of procedure. The charter does state, under Article 2, Section 13, that the council can adopt- specific rules and procedures under which they want to operate. You will have the opportunity to amend that. That's something that you as a council and every other council that has come before you has either touched on, tweaked, adjusted, amended in different ways. But the date and time of meetings, where they occur, when they occur, those are all governed under the, both the charter and the rules of procedure. So, other general areas of the charter under, you know, more broad categories that you don't deal with, like I said, on a day-to-day or week-to-week basis, city divisions and, you know, city departments. I apologize, I see that's misspelled there. I wouldn't be human if I didn't dare. Finance and taxation, contracts, elections, initiatives and referendum, franchise and public utilities, and general succession and governments and amendments to the charter, those are all covered under these different articles that you see on your screen here. The one thing I would focus on here is that council under Article Seven acts by motion or resolution or ordinance. It does not require a resolution in some circumstances, nor an ordinance in some circumstances. We had an example last night where council voted to give direction to move forward with a negotiation process on a piece of property out near the airport. There was no resolution or ordinance involved in that. So, motion and a vote can occur even without resolution or ordinance. Council actions by ordinance do create new city code. The law is ever-changing, ever-growing, and in a local perspective, in a home rule perspective, the ordinances that you pass as a city council are what go into our local city code. They become codified as the laws of the city to be implemented and enforced by city administration. That's under Article Two, or sorry, Seven, and Section Fifteen of the city code, and also city code section, here it is, one-one-one-one. There's only one of those in the entire city code. Resolutions, sorry, are not codified and therefore not part of the city code, yet they still create policy for the city council. And you'll see quite a few policy resolutions come forward. There are other purposes for resolutions as well, and we'll learn of that as we go along. But again, we're moving along fairly quickly today, if you haven't been able to tell already, on a high level. Obviously, as I mentioned, as we opened this slide, city code can be amended, and the law is always changing. Future councils can unwind what previous councils have passed. So, where the nuts and bolts of the details are in city regulations, that's found in the city code. It governs everything from boards and commissions to nuisances, like dogs-at-large, creations of duties of specific city divisions or sections, zoning regulations, minimum wage. There are fifteen titles in our city code, and Title Twenty is a separate one for special ordinances. And I won't get into that today, but again, I can discuss that with you all in a more one-on-one setting as we go through a more in-depth training. So, when it comes to city governance, and might I pause there? Is there anything that has been placed in the chat or any questions that have come up that I can address?
No questions just yet, nothing in the chat, but if anyone does, please feel free to put it into the chat, and then Sterling, within the next minute or two, I'll let you know they're there.
Wonderful. I appreciate that, Julie. That just means we're in the after-lunch slot. People are finally getting into their food comas, and everybody's asleep. It's riveting, like you said, riveting. So, as you can see here, this is a nice illustration through a cartoon of the need for open city government, the need for open meeting laws, and I'm going to touch on that right now. One of the things you will deal with, especially in today's world of social media and texting and immediate communications, is open meeting law. Many of the open meeting laws that we have were created back when we didn't even have, you know, these wonderful methods of communication and technology. A phone call was about the only thing that could be made as these laws were developed. A lot of people call them the sunshine laws because they do shed light on what government is doing. Under Arizona law, it's found in Title Thirty-eight, Four Thirty-one-O-One. It states that all meetings of the council and legal action of public bodies, that includes school boards and the like, shall be public meetings open to the public, so they can attend and listen to deliberations and proceedings. A very interesting note, when COVID started, that word "attend" in Thirty-eight, Four Thirty-one-O-One received some specific scrutiny with respect to how meetings can be conducted remotely. There is already a provision in state law that says through electronic or other technological means, meetings can be conducted. The Attorney General's Office did issue an opinion that these virtual or remote meetings can be conducted, official action can be taken, as long as it's open to the public, and the public is given the opportunity to, as it says there, attend and listen. One common misconception, it's not on here, but public participation is not required. It is an option under open meeting law. It is something that we have in our rules of procedure, so that is something that we do typically have with our meetings. And I will go back to the fact that public meetings have to be posted on agendas that are posted no more than, or no less, sorry, than twenty-four hours in advance. That's under ARS, Thirty-eight, Four Thirty-one-O-nine. All meetings have to be open to the public. Again, legal action has to take place in those public meetings. All the proposed discussion and consideration leading up to that legal action also has to be in those open meetings, and only items that are agendized. That means placed on an agenda with a specific description of what's going to be discussed. Those are the only things that can be discussed. If we start to get out of, outside the scope of those items, and I know we've already had one meeting where I had to chime in and indicate that there was what we call some scope creep. We were getting outside, we were creeping outside of the scope in some circumstances. And that's something that, as the parliamentarian of the meetings, I will be reminding you, Mayor D.C., or Vice Mayor Daggett, if you're conducting a meeting, or other council members, I'll jump in and say we're getting outside the scope of what's been posted to be discussed. The reason for that, yes.
With that, there is a question.
Yes.
Greg?
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Sterling, I've got one for you. It's one that I know you hear over and over again, and it might even be a bit of a softball pitch, but I know it will be of interest. We have a group of council people in this hypothetical who just by chance happen to get together. It could be a social event, it could be a function downtown, not posted as an open meeting, but all of a sudden we have, you know, the requisite number of people in the same place in the same time. Is that a problem?
I will say that is a softball question, but it's got a curve to it, if you can curve a softball pitch. I can tell you that's not appropriate for the meeting to occur. Obviously, if no city business is being discussed, it's not an issue, but how do people know? That really is where I get to the phrase, "is it appropriate?" What is the appearance that that is giving? I think you have to keep in mind on a regular basis that you are in the public's eye now, and you are being watched, and for better or for worse. If you just happen to encounter each other, you know, a brief, you know, conversation about something completely off-topic, not even related to city business, is probably what's occurring. But the public may not know that. So, my advice is avoid those situations. We do know of some situations, social events, for example, award ceremonies in regular times, not in COVID, where we're going to have a quorum of council members attending. In that case, we actually, through Stacy, post it for a possible quorum and indicate that no city business is going to be discussed. But that at least puts the public on notice that you may encounter a group of council members, a quorum of council members present at that event. If it happens by happenstance, just be aware you're being watched. That's the only caution I would give. So, again, the whole purpose behind this is that public access should be maximized. People need to have the opportunity to know what their local government is discussing. We're always going to view it on the side of openness. That's the presumption here, is that it needs to be open. So, any uncertainties are resolved with an eye toward openness. So, the definition of a meeting is a gathering, or that's through by-person technological devices of the public body at which they discuss, propose, or take legal action, including deliberations. So, this includes telephone, email, group texts, and social media communications. It's essentially any communication where you know, especially if members of the council are being targeted with your communication, for example, on social media. Again, open meeting law was created long before social media came around, and the law has not caught up with that yet. My advice, please make sure you're being very careful when you make statements on any kind of social media, or when you're involved in any kind of conversation where other council members may be present. There is a clear provision in the law that allows you to state your position on a certain issue. But going into further discussion and attempting to persuade, that can get problematic with respect to social media communications. So, again, meetings have to comply with notice, agenda, and minute requirements. It had agendas and notices state the date, time, and place, and the information describes the matters that will be discussed, and we won't get outside of those those posted agenda items, the scope of those within the meetings, and again, that has to be twenty-four hours in advance.
And Sterling, there's a comment, if it's okay?
You bet.
Well, thank you, Julie. And Sterling, I'm just going to kind of say something that you obviously know, but just for the benefit of the new council people. If we're on social media, and it's on a closed site, which there's members of council on, then that is very problematic. And the one that comes to mind is Northern Arizona Politics, which probably most of the people on this council are members of. So, we need to be very, very careful about not saying anything on there because it's not public, it's a closed site, and etc. So, thank you.
Again, thank you for that, Councilmember McCarthy, and Mayor Council, I could not agree more. Anything that is a closed forum, open only to certain individuals, and any kind of city business is being discussed, that's, I strongly advise against that. I know it's very hard because much of the communication is done through social media today, but again, you can tread cautiously and actually succeed in communicating your position, but not run afoul of the open meeting law. It takes some practice, and you will have questions. Please call me. I want to be there for you as you have questions. It sounds like there's another one.
So good. Councilmember Shimoni with a question.
Yes, thank you, Julie, and thank you, Sterling. A quick question. Something I learned that was very eye-opening to me at a conference was that on our personal pages, we are not allowed to ban people, and we are also technically not allowed to not friend someone or have a limited profile on our personal page if, you know, we're talking about politics, which I'm afraid most all of us do. Is that your understanding too?
So, there is a case back east that came down a year or two ago where a, basically a county board, Board of Supervisors, a member of the Board of Supervisors, was discussing on a personal page county business, and encountered somebody who was not speaking favorably toward her, and banned them from her page, and the court did find that, hey, this is public business, county business that you're talking about, even if it's your own personal page. So, that was a ruling that came down from a court, yes.
So, yeah, kind of somewhat shocking, I know, council, but basically our personal pages are public forums, and we can't ban or unfriend people or not friend people, per se. I don't know how much that's taking.
I want to clarify that, Councilmember Shimoni, because the specific issue here was that she invited, she opened it as a public forum by inviting discussion about the politics, about the county business in which she was involved. If you have a personal page in which you do not discuss any city business, and if people attempt to post items on there about your city business and you don't address those, please come to me and let's talk about that. That's something I'd like to evaluate further. It was the specific reason the court found that this was a public forum was because she intended it that way. She intentionally went out and opened it up for discussion that way. So, moving on, as you can see with the minutes, and Stacy is one that can speak more to this, but it determines which members are present, which are absent. One recent update to that is now the minutes also must reflect the actual manner in which the vote, the outcome of the vote was at the end. That is usually the mayor that will identify. Typically, we've had a lot of unanimous votes, but every once in a while, you do get a four-three or a five-two, and the best manner for that, Mayor D.C., as we've already discussed, is to simply identify those that were no votes, or the minority votes, if you will, and the rest, obviously, by surmising that the city clerk will be able to put those in the minutes accurately. Again, the minutes give a general description of matters. They're not verbatim. It talks about the legal actions that were proposed and taken, and names of persons making statements or presenting any kind of material. That includes all public comments. So, what is a quorum? Again, it's four or more of you because we're a seven-member council. And what if there's not a quorum? You can't do a meeting. The meeting's adjourned, and discussions and presentations will have to be rescheduled. And what if the quorum is lost during the meeting? Same thing. The meeting is immediately adjourned. We'll have to pick up that business later if we have a lack of a quorum. So, executive sessions are what I want to touch on next, and I'll do it very briefly. They're closed to the public, but they have to, they have to be about very specific issues in order to qualify under this law, Thirty-eight, Four Thirty-one-O-three, is what governs under the Arizona revised statutes. The most typical is for legal advice. You can also go in to talk about employment, but if you're going to talk about an employee specifically, you have to give them twenty-four hours' notice, and that employee actually has the option, holds the option, of whether that will be a discussion in open or an executive session. There are other things such as a discussion of, you know, litigation or contract negotiations or property negotiations where essentially if the city was showing its hand by discussing in open what it wants to offer to purchase a piece of property, or where it wants to open to sell a piece of property or lease a piece of property, that could undermine the best interests of the city. There are also a few things that have been added with respect to security, and information discussed with council with respect to security plans. That can also be an executive session. So, again, under open meeting law, we can't go around polling individual council members to reach a decision to kind of tally the votes before the meeting. That's inappropriate and a violation of open meeting law. The discussion, the deliberation, has to be in the open meeting. If it's outside for the purpose of circumventing open meeting law, a violation does occur. And while I'm talking about violations, I will let you know it's the Attorney General's Office that investigates those. And typically, when one occurs, if it was innocent, not intentional, it may not be an issue that has to be reported. However, even the smallest ones, I review very carefully, and self-reporting to the Attorney General's Office is typically the best action and the best method for resolving any of those issues. Again, use of email, other electronic communications, including social media and group texts among a quorum is prohibited and a violation of open meeting law. The public doesn't always have access to those kinds of discussions. Some of you may say social media is open to the public. People can get on and see my, you know, Instagram or Facebook page. Not everybody has an electronic device, and not everybody has access to one. I think we're getting closer to where the law may say someday, well, you can go to a public library and use a computer there to create your own Facebook page. I just don't know that that's going to be anytime soon. Again, a nice illustration here of, you know, in this cartoon, clearly a discussion already occurred at Larry's son's birthday party. And in the email thread, and this would be a clear violation, you see the two dismayed members of the the public wondering what's going on. I thought this was supposed to be open.
And Sterling, a comment, Councilmember Shimoni?
Hey, thank you, Julie. Really quick, Sterling, I just wanted to add that what we've done in the past, council, was if we're at an event or a gathering or whatever it might be, and there's three of us in the room, the fourth person that shows up typically has provided the courtesy to to leave the space and not join the conversation. Just something that we've done. Thank you. Just, just something that we've done. Thank you.
Thank you, and just closing this out, um, if found guilty of an open meeting law violation, you need to be aware that, uh, the, a fine can be levied up to $500 against a public, public official personally for each violation, and the public official must personally, obviously, pay that fine. And you are subject to removal of office, so it's something that you shouldn't, um, toy with or take lightly. Um, so moving on, um, the public hearing process, and this is one where I'm, I'm going to try and get in and get out, but I am going to get into a little more detail here. One portion of our meetings, you, you saw one last night that dealt with public hearings for the purpose of liquor licenses. That isn't the kind of public hearing I'm talking about here. The public hearing process I'm referring to is during the regular portion of the meeting, where our regular business is discussed. And this is found under our rules of procedure. Uh, the chair can limit the amount of time for public debate if it's an extensive one, and circumstances and attendance look like they're going to require that. Even so, previously, the mayors, uh, have allowed discussion to, to be had by any who, or comments to be made by any who attend. Um, the chair should also remind the public that comments won't be any more than three minutes in length, and that interpretation services are available, allowing five minutes for anybody who needs those. And if the chair, um, so chooses, a person speaking for a group of 10 or more people can have 15 minutes, but those 10 people must stand and identify themselves, and they can't speak, uh, during any other portion of that specific item. Uh, and you can't share time, cede time between speakers. So through the public hearing process, and I put it alone on a slide all by itself here with white space, um, because you have to open the public meeting, and these are little things that get lost sometimes in the mix of a meeting, but opening the public hearing is, is obviously the first step.
And Sterling.
Yes.
We, we have a question. Mayor DC.
Yeah, I was just wondering how we are doing that electronically for having 10 people stand up to get the 15 minutes? How, how is that procedurally being done these days?
We haven't had a request for it yet. And when we have to cross that bridge, I will say that I think we will have to have 10 people, um, call in, and Stacy, I don't know if you want to comment on that. Have we, have you determined any sort of process with respect to that?
Thank you for the question, Sterling. Um, we haven't run into that quite yet, so we don't have, uh, we don't have an official process. Um, I'll be talking a little later this afternoon about how our virtual public participation has been occurring. And I think that within that structure that we've been using, we can, um, work to identify the 10 people, and then, of course, we would notify, um, you that we have, you know, we've established that there's 10 people, and, and they would be allotted some additional time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. So again, uh, as we move through the staff public hearing process, and these are for things like public hearing on a zone change, for example. Um, the staff presentation, uh, is, um, 10 minutes in length unless the council allows the, uh, um, presenter to exceed, which usually does happen. Uh, information on a rezone request is extensive, and 10 minutes usually is not enough. The same thing with respect to the applicant. Um, you know, only upon the applicant's specific request if they want to present. They don't have to. Uh, but again, that can be more than 10 minutes if the council still authorizes. Then council can question the staff and the applicant. And then public comment occurs. Again, each individual gets three minutes, and I've put the verbatim language in here because I want to encourage you. I'm not going, going to read through it. But please look through it under the rules of procedure, and we'll get into, uh, that a little more as I close up my discussion today on the rules of procedure. Again, this refers to the 10-minute rule, um, or sorry, the 15-minute rule for 10 or more parties. And again, the applicant's response, again, if the applicant wants to respond, and staff's response. These timeframes can also be adjusted by council. Um, and council deliberations and questions then occur, um, with respect to questions to staff and the applicant. Um, one thing that I wanted to point out here is that after three minutes, the council can ask relevant questions to those who are making public comments. Uh, they need to be for clarification, not for debate or argument, and they can't simply be, you didn't finish your statement, can you please finish? Um, it has to be a relevant question about something they've discussed, and, uh, um, you know, uh, otherwise, we can get into very, very long, extensive discussions which lean toward debate, and it's, it's not the intent of the public hearing process. After that, the public hearing is closed, and mayor, you call for a motion, a second, and any further discussion, if any, and then a vote. Um, that, uh, is where I will close on public hearings. If anybody else has any, uh, questions on that, I'm going to, unless they do, I'm going to move on to conflicts of interest. This is, this is one where I will probably do the deepest dive for you here today because as, you know, members of the city council and city employees even, uh, we're all subject to the conflict of interest laws in Arizona revised statutes thirty-eight, five-oh-one through five-eleven. And those conflict of interest laws, I'll just jump right into it, under five-oh-three, it states a public officer who has or who's relative, and that's usually mother, father, brother, sister, child, uh, anybody who's, uh, within the first degree, if you will. Uh, and I'll, I'll throw out the table of consanguinity. That's where you go to find out what degree you're related to somebody. But at any rate, if you have, or that relative has a substantial interest in a decision of the public agency or any contract sale or purchase or service, then that, uh, publicate, you have to disclose that, uh, interest, and you have to, um, basically step away, not vote, or participate in the discussion, the consideration, and, and the action. Um, under thirty-eight, five-oh-two-eleven, a substantial interest is identified or, or defined as a non-speculative financial pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest. And we'll get into remote interest here in a moment. But it's generally any interest that affects you, your relatives', um, financial, uh, property interests. That's where you have to be very careful. So if you have questions on this, again, as I counseled on anything else with open meeting law or the charter, please just call me, contact me, and then we can discuss. Um, three questions that I think you can, uh, identify conflicts of interest with are, will my decision have a positive or negative impact on my interests or that of my relatives? It's a fairly simple question. Or do I have a monetary or ownership interest in the matter? Or is my interest, you know, other than one of the designated remote interests? So let's get into what remote interests are.
Sterling?
Yes.
There's a question. Vice Mayor David.
Hi, thank you, and Sterling, I apologize because you may answer this in, uh, in another slide. Um, serving on the board of a nonprofit that has some kind of business before the council or, or any kind of affiliation with an organization where, where the, the council's decision will not affect you monetarily, that is not a conflict of interest, correct?
It is not. Um, it's not a substantial conflict of interest. Um, somebody may see it as a remote conflict of interest, but again, I, I went back to the three, uh, uh, items here to identify a substantial contract, conflict of interest. These three questions, is it personal to you or one of your relatives? Uh, a nonprofit organization is not personal to you or one of your relatives. Now, even though that's the case, I will say, you need to be very careful with that. Sometimes the appearance of a conflict or even a remote conflict may present issues for you, and it's something we should talk through. Please call me, uh, email me, and, and let's discuss if you have a question about something like that. I've known council members who, despite the fact that there is no pecuniary or financial gain or loss to be had or by them or a family member, um, no monetary interest whatsoever, they have still recused with respect to any kind of, uh, decision being made with respect to a board that they sit on, a nonprofit, for example. So it, it really is your decision in the end, but please counsel with me about it, and, and let's, uh, you know, have that discussion to make sure you're making an informed decision when you do. Does that answer your counsel, or your question, Vice Mayor?
It does. Thank you.
You bet. So again, remote interests are financial and property interests, but they're deemed to be so minor that they don't trigger the reporting, uh, in the non-participation requirements. You can still vote, and you can participate in the discussions. Um, examples, and you'll see, this is one that came up, and that we've already discussed it, but it's not a problem to be an unpaid director of the Boys and Girls Club, for example, voting to approve a new building for their project, um, when the Boys and Girls Club comes before the council. Uh, that's specifically provided for under Arizona law. So, uh, as far as examples, more examples of remote interests, a recipient of a municipal service under the same terms and conditions as the general public. You're voting on water rates that are going to be implemented across the board, and it's going to impact you financially, yes. But that doesn't mean it's going to impact you any more or less than anyone else who pays, uh, their water bill in the city of Flagstaff. Another example, um, a member of a trade or a business or an occupation, uh, where there are a class of 10 or more persons, essentially, uh, that are in the same business, trade or occupation. This is one that has come up before. And if, as long as you have no greater interest than the other members of that occupation out there, if you're a contractor and you're going to, um, well, the example here is a property owner who's going to discuss a vote on zoning amendments that impacts numerous other people in, uh, you know, the same kind of zoning class. Um, that is something that would not be a conflict of interest for you as a council member. So what if you do have a substantial conflict? Again, refrain from voting or participating in the discussion and consideration. Make the conflict of interest known on the official record. State it during the meeting, uh, when the item is called by the mayor. Simply state, this is an item where I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, and step away. In the, in the, you know, normal times, you would step out of the chambers in city council chambers. You would leave the room and be invited back in after the discussion and action takes place. With these remote meetings, simply leave the meeting and ask to be brought back in, um, by the clerk. Not that Stacy doesn't have enough to do already, but after the discussion and, uh, the, uh, decision is made, we can call you back in through the, the technological means that we have. And what if you aren't sure? Again, just give me a call. Um, if I do issue a formal opinion on it, please be aware that under the public records laws of the state of Arizona, this is not protected. Uh, it is, yes.
Sorry, I caught you mid-sentence.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. Question from Councilmember McCarthy.
Sterling, uh, if we had a conflict and we obviously would not vote on it, and we wouldn't make any statements during the, um, discussion, um, before I asked the rest of the question, I've seen where people have, uh, left the dais, but then they're just sitting in the back of the room. So is that acceptable, or do you have to actually, like, leave the building? And then the related question is, well, if it's okay to just listen, as long as you're not saying anything, would it be acceptable to listen, just like any other member of the public?
So I appreciate the council, or the question, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, leaving the room is my recommendation. That is ultimately your decision. If you simply step off the dais and you're standing in the back of the room, there could be the appearance of you're still shooting awkward glances or, um, looks at other council members. It's cleanest if you leave the room. That's, that's simply my advice. Um, and then come back in after the discussion is complete and the action is complete. That's why I went back to this slide. It does say leave the table or the room. Again, it's, it's your call, but that's my recommendation to leave the room.
Well, if it ever comes up, we'll talk about it.
That sounds good. And again, uh, I was indicating under public records law, um, legal advice is usually something that is confidential and does not have to be disclosed. Uh, if a public records request comes in for it, that is not the case. There's an exception here for a legal memo or a legal opinion with respect to a conflict of interest that is available to the public. And yes, we've had that happen a number of times. Um, this one is, should be fairly obvious, but I have to include it. Gifts and bribes, never use your official position to secure or, and never accept anything valuable, uh, that could benefit or would not orderly or ordinarily accrue in the performance of your duties. It's just something you wouldn't get but for your job as a city council member, your role as a city council member, and this is the same for public employees, um, not just public, uh, officials who are elected. Often, things will come, tickets to a game. I will tell you that, uh, quite often, the, the method of handling that is, if the tickets have already been dropped off, they simply go to the HR director who randomly, you know, selects somebody within the city, um, uh, you know, through, you know, an email. First person that speaks for these gets them. It's an email to everyone or something like that. But that's just one example, um, that, uh, we've seen many other different things. So, uh, finally, uh, when it comes to conflicts of interest, I talked a lot about the perception. For example, Councilmember McCarthy's example of standing in the back of the room. Um, public percep, perception and the appearance of a conflict are also something you should weigh very heavily in your consideration and decision-making. Is there a sufficient appearance that your continued participation would harm your credibility or the credibility of the council or the city? Um, these are things we can talk through if you give me a call. Um, is the accusation reasonably grounded? Or is the person accusing you actually in a position to gain, uh, by your withdrawal from the discussion? There could be a different side to it there. So there, it's multifaceted. Uh, it's, it's an interesting question and one that I'm happy to discuss. Are there any further questions on conflicts of interest?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay, I just wanted to close with the fact that if you don't declare a conflict and do participate in the discussion, and it's a substantial conflict, the discussion and the action or something you participate in, the contracts can be voided. The affected persons can sue, um, both you and the city, and the court can assess attorney's fees not only against the city but against you. And what if you do not declare a substantial conflict for you as your off, in your office, your position? You can forfeit your office. There are potential criminal charges, um, if it's knowing or intentional. If you did it on purpose, if it's negligent or reckless, um, it, it downgrades it to a misdemeanor, but there would be a lot of fact-finding involved in that, and it's a mess you'd, you'd just rather not be involved in. So I would counsel against it. So finally, closing out today with, uh, the rules of procedure, and I'm going to fly through these fairly quickly, as I know we're, um, gonna stay on our schedule. We're, we're walking the walk, as you said, Julie, and I'm happy to do that. The council, under the charter, it states the council shall determine its own rules and order of business. The council has adopted the Flagstaff City Rules of Procedures, and they're updated frequently. Uh, last updated, uh, in February of two thousand nineteen. Um, rule two, yeah, that was rule one. Rule two incorporates the conflict of interest laws that we just discussed, and, uh, necessary compliance with the same as you are in positions of trust. And rule three sets forth the specific dates, times, and locations of our council meetings, as we discussed earlier, as required under open meeting law. Um, the process for changing the date and time and location of any meeting i- is something that needs to be placed on agenda and discussed by the entire council, and the decision needs to be made. If that happens, under the rules of procedure, it has to be seven days in advance that notice is given that that meeting is going to change, either date, time, or location. Or if the rule is suspended, which is the current situation we're under with respect to, um, regular council meetings, uh, the rules have been suspended with respect to those meetings, and we're not meeting at our normal four-thirty and six o'clock time on Tuesdays. Under the rules of procedure, rule four gives instructions on the preparation of agendas. And this is where it talks about the fact that the city manager prepares agendas, and Stacy is heavily involved in this process. And those typically go out on Friday. Not typically, they're required to go out on Friday, uh, before the, the next meeting, and that's, uh, usually why, um, Stacy will be getting with staff members who have not, uh, completed their staff reports prior to the deadline. It's, Friday is always an interesting time. Uh, rules, yes, yes.
There's another question, um, from Greg.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you, Sterling. I'm wondering if we can, uh, circle back to rule three momentarily because I know it's of interest to the, uh, newly seated council and specifically, uh, with, with these procedures in mind, and perhaps it's just an elaboration of what you already said, but if council was desires of going back, reinstituting, uh, regular meeting times and dates, uh, and basically- was desires of going back, reinstituting regular meeting times and dates and basically ending the suspension, how would that happen procedurally? Thanks.
You bet. Procedurally, that would need to be placed on an agenda by you, the city manager or through a fair process. And that would be an item, the, the discussion would be potential discussion, consideration and action about possibly rescinding the suspension of the rules with respect to the regular times for regular council meetings. So it would be to rescind the suspension that occurred, I believe in April. All right, moving along, I, I just mentioned another way to, oh, sorry, is there another question?
There's one more question, yes.
Thank you, yeah, just to piggyback on that. So for example, if we wanted to, given that it was a vote to rescind the section on the timing of meetings, if, for example, we want to discuss maybe having it at five o'clock or five thirty or changing the times directly, would we have to first remove that rescension from there and then have another agenda item about changing the actual code itself?
I would recommend that course of action, yes. It would be a two-step process. It would be cleanest for the record and for the public to understand that the, the suspension of the rules has been rescinded. And then you would talk about a much broader question. You're talking about now amending the rules of procedure. It is allowed under rule 11 of the rules of procedure, they, they can be amended. As I mentioned, the last time they were was in February of 2019. Counsel would simply need to put that on the agenda. And I know that if that happens, Stacy already has a list of things that we identify. We learn as we go along, the rules evolve over time. And there are some things that aside from the, the, the time that meetings start, that rule would need to be changed on its own, aside from the, the rescinding of the suspension of the rules on that. And other items that the council may want to amend with the rules of procedure could also come up. You could just do the meeting time alone without opening the entire rules of procedure. That's an option as well.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely. So again, in preparing agendas, the charter indicates as well as the rules of procedure that the city manager puts together the agenda, prepares the agenda. And items can be placed on the agenda by approaching the city manager about it, but there's also the fair process, which is a future agenda item request process. Those can be raised with the city manager during the two from portion of the meeting in city council meetings. There's typically not discussion back and forth about whether that's going to go on to a gen, an agenda. What it does is it goes into a queue and I am going to actually touch on this just lightly because city clerk Salzberg, Stacy Salzberg is going to address this in more detail later. But I encourage you to get into the rules to read 4.02. This is typically an area of high interest in the rules of procedure. How do I get items on the agenda for discussion and possible support of council? As a council member, please look at rule 4.02. There are several parts to it here, as you can see. And the, it's not uncommon that something gets addressed through, you know, kind of a flexible approach to it. If staff is able to approach it by resolving it through a CCR or, which is a city council report to answer the question that maybe came up as a fair, but was more of a question that didn't really need to be an item on an agenda. There are different options. If that occurs, then there is removal of affair under rule 4.03. And you know, again, I'll let Stacy go into those in more detail. There's a lot of information on your screen right now. I don't expect you to absorb that. With all of the information I'm throwing at you today, I commonly compare it to sipping from a fire hydrant. You can't quite absorb it all in one sitting and that's why I will follow up with individual meetings and we learn as we go. But this is how you remove a fair. So as far as, I'm sorry, that removal of affair should not be up at the top. I had not noticed that. But moving on to rule five, in governing the order of business in which council discusses and decides upon various items. This includes the consent, the routine, the first portion of the regular meeting. It also includes the public hearings and the regular business during the latter portion of the regular council meetings. And again, right now, those are scheduled under the rule to occur at four thirty and six o'clock. The lighter items at the four thirty, the more regular business during and public hearings during the six o'clock. But again, that rule is suspended right now. And if council wants to address that, as we've discussed, they can. Rule six is where the mayor is indicated as by charter, the chair and presides over the meetings. And there's also a process which you used yesterday. Happens only so often, once every two years, that a vice mayor, a person receiving the highest number of votes in the most recent general election is appointed as the vice mayor. So that's rule six. Rule seven provides rules for order and decorum among council, staff and the citizens participating in council meetings. And again, this is something that I can talk to you more about in one-on-ones, very high level here. You know, with our current remote meetings, the lack of public decorum is less of an issue. We have had people bring noise-making, artificial noise-making devices into the meeting. And there is going to be a training as we go forward and get back toward regular meetings in the, in the council chambers with Mary Ann Sullivan, a senior assistant city attorney and advisor to the police department about when a meeting is actually being disrupted. And the decorum is something that, that, these are the rules that we deal with that in, but there's case law about when somebody can actually be asked to leave a public meeting because the public does have the right to attend and listen, as we've talked about, unless they're actually disturbing. And there are some specific issues with respect to what is a disturbance and what is not. I will, yes.
There's a, a comment, Manager Clifton.
Thank you. A comment and more of a question, Sterling. And for the benefit of the newly seated elected officials, last June during the, oh, the, the apex of the protests and the movement that was happening, Black Lives Matter, we had one meeting where there were over 500 public comments that came in. And the council, I think, buried rightfully heard every one of them. And if you may recall, which I'm sure you do, we went into the wee hours of the morning. I think we adjourned at around 3:00 AM. Subsequent to that, the council decided to put a little bit more formality into the structure that we now have with virtual meetings. And I thought I would invite you with, with that backdrop to chat about how it is now that we go about public comment. It might not be exactly where you are in your presentation, but I thought it would be a good opportunity. Thanks.
Oh, absolutely. And I will say that I know Stacy is going to address that, the city clerk is going to address that in detail. But I will say, just from a higher level perspective, public comment was simply in writing. When we had the Attorney General's opinion come down at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, indicating that meetings could occur electronically, that that was enough to constitute attendance of the public, we devised or came up with a process for people to submit their public comments in writing to be read during the meetings by staff. After that overwhelming situation in June and with a council that, that wanted to listen to every comment, because there is some leeway there when it comes to, again, circumstances and the, the time management. However, it was determined that the comments would be listened to. So we went ahead and read every one of those. Since that time, it has changed that if you want to comment, you can send it to that same email, but, and it's very clearly stated on our agendas, you will be asked to be available by phone when that item comes up. And if you're not, you will not have the opportunity to speak. If you are, you will have the opportunity to speak. But that, that just touches on it briefly. I know Stacy will get into that more in depth. And again, other issues such as ten or more people, those are issues that we've known will come and, you know, we've, we've looked at some ways to address that and I know Stacy will talk to that as well. Does that answer the question, City Manager Clifton?
It does. And in the chat column, Stacy has indicated that she'll cover that. And so thanks for touching on it. It sounds like we'll have more discussion in a bit. Thank you, Sterling.
You bet. And again, my apologies for the removal of the fair continuing across the, the screen there at the top. That's just something that shouldn't have been there. But rule seven, again, is where we deal with these issues of order and decorum. And that's where the public comment does come in. Rule eight is actually one that a lot of people aren't aware are in our rules, but any council member can appeal to the council from a ruling of the chair. This is with respect to decisions made about the process or procedure of a meeting. When that happens, there has to be a very specific question stated. And that is, shall the position of the chair, sorry, I have to adjust my screen here, shall the position of the chair be sustained? And if a majority of the members vote, and it's just a simple majority, it's not a super majority. If you have four that vote yes, then the ruling of the chair is sustained. Otherwise, it's overruled. So that, that's something that is out there, kind of as a check and balance on the, the conduct of the meetings by the mayor or the vice mayor who's ever conducting the meeting. Rule nine governs the public participation, the time for citizens to participate and the public hearing protocols that we went through in pretty great detail previously. So I won't go into that again. Rule 10 gives the very specific details on motions, amendments to motions, withdrawal of motions. You used a lot of these yesterday. I know that most of the motions were made by council members that were incumbent. However, the more experienced we get, those of you who are new on council will get the opportunity to make motions. I, I will tell you, the easiest way to make a motion is simply to make a motion to and then look at what is highlighted in blue on your agenda. Or the, the point, the portion that is the link on your agenda, that's the agenda item you're considering. It's either to approve or deny that item. And if you read it out, it's very clear for the record and we like to have that clear for the record. If it's seconded, then the count, or the mayor will call for further discussion. And if there is none, the vote will occur and then the mayor will indicate the outcome of the vote. Again, I will discuss these more in more one-on-one situations with each of you as there are then, you know, amendments to motions, as it says here, tabling motions, postponing or tabling items, postponing items, they're all reconsidering items. There are many different things under this section that we just don't have time to get into the deep dive on today. Again, under rule 11, there is a bunch of miscellaneous items, prior staff review and approval of agenda items, for example, has to go through the city manager's office and my office to be approved, to be on an agenda. There's the nine thirty rule, which is if, if we don't pick up an item before nine thirty and we're not done with the agenda item, somebody has to make a motion to either complete the agenda or complete certain items on the agenda after nine thirty, simply because we, we're concerned, I think council members have been concerned that after nine thirty, we may not be as sharp as we were at four thirty or, or six or three in the afternoon. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rule of Order, but not by strict adherence. They generally apply those motions, those seconds, those reconsiderations that I was talking about above here under rule 10. That's where those come from and the, there are constantly repeated or updated revisions or additions, sorry, of Robert's Rules of Order. And we do, you know, look to those as guidance, general applicability, just not strict adherence. And of course, under miscellaneous items, there are also citizen petitions. You're aware that items can come onto the agenda, the climate emergency, the housing crisis, all of those came onto the agenda through citizen petitions and this is where that rule is found. And finally, to close it out, there are provisions on photography and video and where people can stand, where the press can stand when in chambers. That's really not applicable right now, but that is there as well. So those are the items that I wanted to present to you today. If there are any additional questions, I am more than willing to answer them if you're still awake.
Thank you, Sterling. I'll jump in just because again, I know this is of high interest and perhaps to the benefit of our new mayor. With the virtual meetings, soliciting votes, you know, once a, a motion is made and as was noted at the outset, typically in the chat column, somebody might post the letter M for motion. And then the mayor seeing that knows that there's a motion and similarly the number two for a second, same comment. But once we get to the tally, after there's been discussion on the motion and assume we're ready for vote, what may behoove the mayor is to ask for all those in favor, say, you know, yea. And what I've noticed is, is it's good to have a little bit of pause then because it takes time for people to unmute and offer their verbal yea. And a few times with, with the previous mayor and council, I would see that that process was being truncated a bit prematurely just because it takes a little more time. So my suggestion, mayor, if I may, is, is give that one some time, allow people to get on their microphones and give you the tally you're waiting for. And then in the same respect, when you say any nay votes, give that some time. There, there's been a, more than one instance, quite a few actually, where the yays have lingered over into the day most, and then we have to do a clarification. So that was just an observation I thought I would share with you. And then before we conclude, Sterling, I'll have another question, but I'm going to let this one go at this point. Thanks.
Absolutely. I, I just want to, first of all, commend you, Mayor DC, for last night. Your first meeting went very well. I've seen some that did not go so well for even those that have been experienced on council in the past. So kudos to you. I know we spent an extensive amount of time over the last few days preparing for that. And I, I think it showed last night. Your, your preparation was, was evident and will only get better as we go.
Thank you, Sterling. I really appreciate that and I appreciate your help in preparing for the meeting.
You bet. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Stacy Salzberg, the city clerk, who drafted the template essentially with the, the common language, not that it's verbatim that you have to use it, but common language used to facilitate the discussion among council to have those motions made, seconded the votes. I really appreciate Greg's comment with the remote meetings that we have, these virtual meetings. It's a little more difficult and that little bit of a, a pause does allow for much more clarity. With that, council, I, I don't have anything further unless you have any further questions. I think Greg, you indicated, city manager, you have another question.
Yeah, and at the outset, I would echo your comments. I thought last night's meeting, yesterday's meeting went quite well. And, and it's a statement of the obvious here that in these virtual meetings, especially when you're soliciting votes and having, you know, trying to follow parliamentary procedure, it gets a little bit clunky. And for the new council and the new mayor, we're okay with the clunkiness. It, it takes time to make a clunky process operate smoothly and, and that will happen with, with time. But we all need to be mindful that this, this virtual arena that we're in, I'm actually amazed at how well things have gone throughout the pandemic. And, and some of this is a, a props to the IT department for getting us through the technology. It's, it's actually been fairly smooth and I have heard that comment from people from the outside. My question, Sterling, is one I've been contemplating here for a while. If I was to use the term consanguinity at the dinner table tonight, how might I phrase the question or comment?
How many degrees removed is your great aunt in the table of consanguinity?
All right. I'm, I'm going with it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Well, Sterling, thank you so much for your time and for sharing with all of us about the legal sphere. I feel like your acronym, your nickname should be the EFA, the everybody's favorite attorney. And I think you should now do a quiz. What was rule four? And I think you should now do a quiz. What was Rule 4.03? Just kidding. I don't really think so. Thank you so much, everybody. That's right. Quiet dignity.
That's removal of affair. Just so you know.
Very good. Very good. So we're going to take a 15 minute break so that we get refreshed. When we come back, we will get to hear about the administrative sphere and we'll have Greg Clifton, Stacy Salzberg and Shannon Anderson. It's been wonderful to have the presenters each have their videos on. Counsel, you're welcome to have your video on or off. It always is interesting to look at people. So if you don't mind us seeing you, wonderful. Let's take a full 15 minutes so that, oh gosh, that's math. Okay, 2:33, that's going to put us back at 2:48. Is that right? We'll see everybody then. That sound right, right on the dot, 2:48. Greg, is there anything you would like to say before I kick this second section off?
I just want to compliment Sterling Solomon for his not just keeping us on time, but actually ahead of time. Way to go, Mr. Time Management.
That's right. Absolutely. Thank you so much for that. So in our next section, we have an additional 12 minutes that you do not need to take unless you want to. It's okay. Before we get started, just as a reminder, when we hear from Greg Clifton, Stacy Salzberg and Shannon Anderson, we'd like to hear all of your two words. Greg, if you're interested, you could give us two more. It's up to you. Before we move into that, I'm wondering if anybody who's on this call, counsel or not, might put a one sentence takeaway from the presentations that we've just been hearing this afternoon. I know one of my biggest takeaways was when Sterling said, you're being watched. If you don't mind putting into the chat, what's a takeaway? What's something you learned? What's something that stood out to you? And just go ahead and let them. Very good. HH, I'm going to guess that's Heidi. When in doubt, ask Sterling. Love that. Great comment. Keep them coming in. Wonderful. We're all in this together. Incredible. Yes. Lovely. The EFA will be watching you. Yes. So good.
What exactly is EFA?
That's right. That I have a lot to learn. Beautiful. Holy moly. Yes. Don't miss a meeting, Paul. That's funny. Wonderful. Keep them coming in. So without further ado, we have two sections. First, the administrative sphere. And then after that, we're going to roll right into afterwards, the policy sphere at which that part will end at four o'clock. That part, we've also got Greg Clifton, Stacy Salzberg, but then also Sarah Langley and Sarah Drum. We'll have a half an hour then at the end until 4:30 for a public comment and a little bit of wrap up. It's so wonderful to be learning with everybody today, to see you all today, for us to be focused and intentional like this. So thank you so much, administrative sphere. Take it away.
And thank you. And thanks for inviting me to add two more words to describe myself. I I don't know how to interpret that. Probably the first two words were like, okay, come on, he's got to be kidding. But then, you know, I look at Sterling's two words, quiet dignity and how how thought stimulating that. So I'm going to run with that, Sterling, and somewhat in harmony with yours. My two words now, instead of quiet dignity, I would suggest noisy chaos. There you have it. Noisy chaos. And with that, I am.
Well said, Greg. Very well said.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Once again, I cannot see the chat or anything, Julie, so if you can help me out and hopefully you're seeing the administrative sphere agenda.
Yes, we are, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you so much. The bullets before you, this all kind of flows. This is a nice follow up to what Sterling was providing us. But it is also a bit of a shifting gears. Now we're going to go from the legal arena or the legal sphere to that of administration. And we'll chat first about some management strategies, which are a little bit individualized to to management. And when I speak about management, I just want to preface by noting this is not individualized. This is not me in the first person. This is the manager's office, which collectively includes my office and that of the two deputy city managers. And frankly, includes all of the the leadership team and quite frankly, some of our extended leadership team. Many, many of us in your organization operate in management capacities. So this is a very collective sort of discussion. And if you'll belabor or indulge me while I belabor these strategies a little bit in detail. And again, we'll keep it at high level. We'll then segue into the organizational structure. This should be very important, especially for the newly seated council to see what we look like in terms of the structure of the organization. From that, we'll drift into the role of staff. And at that point, it will no longer be things that are really spoken about in the collective or the the human element, if you will. And thus far today, Julie, especially with her program this morning and things we've been talking about have been very much in the human realm, but we're going to take it a little bit bigger and just talk about roles and roles that occur now and should endure into the future regardless of the people, recognizing, of course, that at the heart of everything here are the people. And then we'll take it a little bit deeper with Stacy Salzberg talking about our agenda and preparing the public record. Similar to what Sterling was talking about, that's very important stuff and it is very explanatory on a number of levels. We'll talk about the council goals, the regular meetings, the work sessions. Sterling chatted about executive sessions. And then we'll bring it back to retreats. And as Julie noted, by that time, we'll be able to wrap up. So thanks for that. And let's proceed. What are the management strategies here in the city of Flagstaff? Words that you hear frequently with respect to administration and management would be collaborative, collective, teamwork, all of the above. We certainly are that way. And we will continue to be that way. And we really do try to foster that collaborative strategy at all levels. Quick examples, you know, we meet Monday mornings, the extended leadership team gets together. There's 70 or 80 people in that in that audience. And we get together virtually and we collaborate. A lot of our time is spent talking about the agendas and things, but we talk about what's happening in our respective divisions and we share a lot of information and we we collaborate. We sometimes get into some problem solving, issue identification, a number of things. Occupy those meetings, but it is a very collaborative process. I hope you would agree with me on that. So with that, you know, and especially noting that underlying collaboration obviously would be a lot of meetings, right? And we meet frequently. And so how do we do that? How do we go about meeting frequently and collaborating while still trying to be effective and efficient? Well, very simply, we instill a lot of purpose into our discussions. So they're not exactly free flowing discussions. There usually is an agenda and there usually is a purpose. And we also try to have clarity. We try to sift through all the noisiness and and all the diversions and drill down on what the issues are in front of us. And with that clarity, we're usually able to make good ground. And then going back to other talking points of today, we strive for brevity. Now, brevity is easier said than done. And you know, it really comes down to how we conduct our meetings within and talking internally as we are now. We have a timeline. Our staff meetings almost always, almost always start at a specific time and end at a specific time. So we have the clock, the clock on the wall to guide us in that. We do not have a facilitator. We don't have Julie in the room. Sometimes I wish we did, but we don't. But we leave it upon ourselves to to exercise purpose and clarity and brevity and get through our meetings with efficiency. Now, a commentary there. Throughout the pandemic, and I think surviving the pandemic and lingering into the future, I believe it's not too far off. We may be doing meetings differently. The virtual meetings has transformed the way we do business here in the city and that that's a truism throughout this nation and throughout the world right now. The virtual meeting platform has has ascended to levels never even contemplated before. And I think we're operating quite remarkably in that capacity. And in fact, I will note that the days are more crowded than they ever were before because we don't have to travel. We don't have to be in a certain room at a certain time. Now we just have to find ourselves in front of a laptop or a desktop and we can be there as we are right now. So there's a greater efficiency being exercised in that. And I think, think with that, a new way of doing things. So it's kind of fascinating, quite frankly, to be living in this time of transformation. Enough about our meetings. We will also talk a little bit about the management strategy of taking care of our existing employees. We can go on and on about this, but we're keeping it at a high level today. Suffice it to note, there will be some discussion as there has been. We had a rollout of our community survey recently in front of the previous council. The new council will be seeing for the first time the outcomes of our community, pardon me, our compensation study. A process that's been underway for a year plus and is now ready for prime time coming your way in January. I queue this up now because it's very, very important. News to the newly elected, we are having some issues with respect to retention and in some cases even recruitment. And I do know we're under a recruitment freeze, but with some of our positions, they are mandatory that we fill them, especially our frontliners, our emergency responders. We've got some issues and we'll chat more about that. I just wanted to plant the seed, if you will, and get it on your on your radar at the at the risk of overusing metaphors here. There's a lot of discussion to be had on that and it will be coming your way and it's very important. Why is it important? Because it is our employees. And as was noted in an earlier discussion today, it's a very high performing organization here. And we're anxious to do the work and fulfill the policies that council directs us to do. But it but we do so with with a very high quality staff and we want to keep that in place so we can continue to serve this community in the best way. Probably enough said on that, it does go back though to what I was showing you earlier when we were talking about the new federalism and the emphasis now being placed upon local governance to do so many things that have not traditionally been in our wheelhouse. And we're doing that, of course, with with more constrained resources or I should say fewer resources or at least greater constraints upon our resources because it's a given that the growth of services and and demands of service and levels of service are not always met with budgetary appropriations and the allocation of resources. Oftentimes, we are expected to be more efficient and provide more cross training and to have less specialization so we can do more things to meet these increased demands. So it's a very important thing. And along with that, we are mindful of our labor costs and we do track them. And we'll talk a little bit more about that tomorrow when we get into the budgets. There's some good news to report there. And especially with respect to what we've been doing with our general fund and how we're getting things in better shape, not just for this council, but for future councils. And that's all so very important. We're being very vigilant with our new positions, especially now that we're in the recession plan. And by the way, you'll get a snippet of that tomorrow as well. Talking about where we are with our recruitment freeze and so forth. But while taking care of our existing employees and being exercising vigilance with the hiring or creating of new positions is not an inconsistent statement. The focus is within, and that is indeed our management strategy. And finally, of course, our continued emphasis upon education and training. What then would be our organizational strategies, taking it kind of to the higher level of looking at our organization? These are things that probably have been talked about at length over the last year and a half or so and but but now with some degree of implementation, less of a vertical hierarchy within our structure or less verticality, if you will, and more emphasis on horizontal inclusion. We'll demonstrate that visually here in just a few minutes. But really what I'm speaking of here is it's less of a top down sort of strategy now within our organization and a little bit more inclusion of management at many levels within the within the ongoing discourse and dialogue that occurs within our organization, a lot more inclusivity. That's my word, Sterling, for the day is inclusivity. It's a little bit easier than consanguine, whatever that was. So more horizontal inclusion, more divisions. We've created two divisions in the course of the past year. One of them was recreated and that, of course, information technology, but also more recently, city engineering and capital improvements. That probably won't be the end of that discussion. There will be a few more divisions as time marches on. They will all be very well founded and well vetted. And but again, it's just a reliance upon this more horizontal inclusion that I'm speaking of. Along with that, and kind of the explanatory basis of why we're doing that is that of empowerment. You know, enabling our colleagues, those who works right next to us or within our divisions and sections, enabling all of them to exercise a little more empowerment and to apply themselves in the most beneficial way for this organization. And when we're able to do that, in my opinion, we are exercising leadership in a beautiful way. We are stepping aside and we are enabling others to learn their leadership skills, which if you think about it, is an important thing and it's incumbent upon all of us in management to do that. Because it will provide for internal advancement opportunities that may otherwise be a little bit stifled. So empowerment is a big strategy that we are embracing. Let's talk a little bit about staffing levels. This graphic tells a story. It takes you back to 2006 and the relevance of that now is this is not just one recession, but two. And so if you look at the very discernible drop off between 2009 and 2010, and that, of course, was the cusp of the Great Recession and we all remember it all too well. Staffing levels plummeted, everything plummeted. I mean, that those were dire times. And I hope you can read this, but if you can't, we were well in excess of 900 full time equivalents at that time in 2009. And a year later, we were down to 820 some radical decrease. And then a further decrease over time. And then around 2014, perhaps hitting a low point and then very incrementally since then, a an ascension back up to where we are today. But if you look carefully, you will see that where we are today is still less than where we were pre-Great Recession. So the graph does tell the story and the takeaway is I think we've done well as an organization and in terms of maintaining staffing levels. Someone look at this and say, yeah, and we're grossly understaffed and we're a little bit stressed because of this. And going back to my comments about increased expectations, and I would acknowledge that, say, yes, that that is true. We need to be mindful of that. Restructures briefly, there have been a number of them and they've all been in the toward the objectives that I have just articulated. And I'm not going to belabor this. We created the executive assistant and the chief of staff positions. There are two positions there to put names to titles. That's Sean and Jason. And they serve our mayor and council respect or nope, they serve our council and mayor respectively. But they are not staff of the council and they are not staff of the mayor. We operate according to the charter that Sterling so eloquently talked about. And so these positions really answer to this office and specifically to our public affairs section, which, as you'll note, was also created under this office. So while these positions are here to assist the mayor and the council, and they do so very aptly, they are they are staff within the organization. And in doing that, and in the interest of keeping these things kind of budget neutral, we eliminated the senior management analyst position. Another thing we did was we moved sustainability to the manager's office. That was pursuant in part to a citizen petition that occurred last winter. And so we're happy for that and things are happening quite, they're coming along just fine in that. I think it's been a rather smooth transition. We also are very fortunate now to have a full time indigenous coordinator. That is Rose Tohe. She is serving that position so well. And of course, recently, the creation of the new indigenous commission and we're excited about that. and we're excited about that. Additionally, we moved the city clerk section under the manager's office. Really, that one was just so I can keep a close eye on Stacy, and we all know that that needs to happen. We moved economic vitality division under this office, and that has also been good. Some of this will be explained in a minute when we put up a graphic to show how these reporting structures now work. And the graphic, I think, can tell the story better than I can. I am proud to talk about the next one, elevating the information technology section, back from a section status to that of division status, very deliberately to elevate the importance of information technology throughout our organization. CJ Perry and his team have been running with this. There's a lot of good things in play. They have a technology team assembled. I've seen the charter, it reads well. And we're beginning to see things come of this, as we should. Because in this day and age, and especially as we talk about increased efficiencies, we can't have that discussion without talking about technology and emerging technologies and how those can better service. They're serving us right now with this virtual meeting. It's a really good example. Yes, please.
There's a question, council member Shimon.
Thank you, Julie. See, Andrew, I do have a question. Do you want me to wait to the end of your presentation?
No, give me a breather. Go ahead and ask it now. And thank you.
First of all, thank you so much for your presentation thus far and your leadership over the past year. I don't even know how long you've been with the city. It is embarrassing, but feels like years. It's been so much you've done, and I think we're all very grateful. You know, I just wanted to go back to the executive assistants for a second. You know, for one, I know that this was a big topic of interest to the previous council. And I just want to thank you again for addressing that topic and helping us manage our own worlds. And Jason, I can speak firsthand, has been excellent to work with and very professional and helpful. And I believe Sean, too, has been an amazing, what's the word, asset to the city, and he's also been a pleasure to work with. Can you just talk about their roles a little bit more in relationship to the council members and where that line is? I at times have have asked for them to do more than they are necessarily supposed to be doing for us. And and even along the lines of like social media and and messaging on personal pages. Can you just maybe make make that clear to council as to where where that line is as to what they can do for us and and what is not necessarily acceptable?
Indeed. And thank you for the question. And also, I think we'll have a little bit of a discussion about that when we get into public comments, because it public input coming in from the community, not necessarily at the dais, but what we hear on a regular basis, because that also is a part of this, how we handle that. I might lean on Jessica Drum, who, by the way, oversees this particular function. And thank you for the question, council member. Yeah, the role of those two individuals, and as you mentioned, it is in response to what we heard a year ago from the entire council, which was, we need help. And so we responded to that. And it was actually the first restructure that we implemented. The role is to provide assistance to the mayor and the council on city business. And that, you know, presupposes a few things. The obvious ones that come to mind would be scheduling meetings, which is huge, setting up conferences, or, you know, attendance at conferences, membership at conferences, preparing talking points and sometimes speeches, sometimes even writing letters, but all of which is underneath the umbrella of city business. And the more specific to your question, the area where we draw the line here is very respectfully, we ask that of all our elected officials, please refrain from from asking things that may drift beyond city business and more into a personal realm, i.e. personal Facebook pages, or things of that like. And we've had discussions of that in the past and will continue to have discussions in the future. But what I'm laying out for you is kind of the parameters. The way I like to articulate this is always think of staff time, always think of staff time with respect to dollars, with respect to the budget, because staff time is dollars. We pay everybody and we pay them per hour or salaries at times in some instances. But the point is, everybody is is being paid with tax dollars for the work that they do. And if we're all mindful of that, and every time we think of delegation of duties, we look at it through the lens of, is it is this costing the taxpayers dollars? And the answer is yes. And then to come along is, is this appropriate? So when you're when we're talking about, you know, the tasks that these individuals do for council and for the mayor, that's a good lens through which to look at it. Thank you so much for the question.
Just to be clear, so Jason can't do a live stream for me, correct?
As much as you would like him to know, the answer is no, he cannot do that.
Just kidding. All right.
Nor can I, for that matter. But you really don't want me doing your live stream. Actually, I did do one for you one time, but it was on my own time.
And Greg, there's a comment.
Another one? Okay.
Jessica.
Jessica. Are you there, Jessica?
Jessica Drum. Hi, sorry, I didn't. I didn't realize how bad the glare behind me was on this. So I don't know that it's actually meeting the the goal of you being able to see. But council member Shimon, I did want to to chime in on that. I know we get questions very specifically about social media posts from time and again, and city staff, so not just live streams, but when the content is requested specifically for a personal political page, staff can't draft that type of content for elected officials. I know occasionally we had an example, say, last night, where you asked that we post additional content about as we're moving into the holidays regarding the, I'm so sorry, Heidi Hansen, I'm going to mess up the tagline, but small, small actions, big deal, and COVID-19 messaging. And so that kind of thing, we will absolutely put out on these cities' Facebook page, particularly when it's in alignment with stated priorities of the city council, small act, big deal. Thank you. The stated priorities of the the majority of council. But so that's where that's where there is a, I would say, maybe the, I don't want to say the cutoff, but we don't, staff can't do those those types of posts.
Well, I can't ask Jason to draft a post for me on some subject, right?
No. If there's something like you did last night that you would like to see the city social media, so we have, and I am happy to go into this in more detail at another time. I know this is not appropriate, but as a very brief primer, if you will, we have a number of social media, official social media pages for the city. And so I think last night was was a great example of asking for additional content to be shared on those pages, using that that city messaging. So yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the, it was a great discussion. And Jessica, since you have become part of the conversation, share with us, if you will, two words that describe who you are. Silhouette could be one of them.
An engaged silhouette. How about that?
I like it.
I'll pull this blind down before I speak again.
You can think more about that. Okay, I think I have hammered on this enough. I do want to mention there's one last thing in play here, which is, oh, by the way, engineering and capital improvements is a similar comment to information technology. That is just because of its prominence within the organization and within the community, we felt a very justifiable basis to have it become a division. And we're so thankful to have them in that status now and at the leadership table. It has been off to a good start, that move, which has been implemented very recently. And then lastly, something that is in play right now is to move open space to parks and recreation. That one is more of a one that just is a matter of fit, in my opinion. It makes sense. It will also enable sustainability to be a little bit more focused on our climate action and adaptation plan. So with that, I am going to go to our structure. And as you can see, we're best viewing the graphic to be displayed as a separate document. Stacy, that's your cue. Can you take the screen and put up the graphic? And then I'm going to invite both Shannon and Shane, the deputy city managers, to talk a little bit about the structure. Once you put it up, I can identify visually who reports to who. You're going to have to enlarge this a bit, mostly for Shane's benefit. But there you go. Hopefully, and if you can't read the print, it's okay. It's really what's being depicted here that's important. And once upon a time, we had a rather vertical hierarchy depicted in this structure. And now we don't. Now we have this kind of fluid structure that that is a little bit chaotic, and very intentionally so. With city council, of course, answering to the community, to the citizenry, and then going back to Sterling's comments pursuant to our charter, the three direct reports to the council, being our municipal magistrate, also being the city manager, and then the city attorney. And then within those, under those positions, a number of direct reports depicted, and then it just continues to flow out. I will start the discussion and then invite Shannon to speak to those divisions of which she has involvement with, same comment with Shane. A year ago, plus, I had two direct reports in my office, and that was the two deputy city managers. I did not personally did not view that to be a good structure, and like to have a little bit more integration into the organization. So this is a depiction of that. And the divisions now or sections that answer directly to my office, in a first person sense, would be the city clerk, the two deputy city managers, economic vitality, public affairs, and sustainability. And that has worked well from a work management and a workload standpoint. I very much enjoy working with with those components of the organization. Shannon, would you like to speak to the divisions that fall under your purview?
Thank you, city manager Clifton. Good afternoon, everyone. Shannon Anderson, one of the deputy city managers. Two words that describe myself, and I asked for help from my spouse, because I'm not really good at talking about myself. So we said supportive and caring are probably the two words that he would use to describe me. So he's a pretty good descriptor when it comes to myself. As far as the areas that I oversee with the city, there are mostly supportive services, serving both internal as well as external customers and public safety. So I oversee risk management, who's really looking at general liability, safety, as well as workers' comp and auto liability, public works, taking care of infrastructure such as streets, facilities, our fleet. They've got parks and recreation as well as solid waste. We also have human resources, which they tend to focus on recruitment benefits, compliance and training, and then also police and fire services on the public safety side. So I'll turn it over to you, Shane.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Deasy and council members. Thank you, Mr. City Manager Greg and Shannon. I have the wonderful privilege of serving this community as one of the two deputy city managers, and to work with an extremely talented and dynamic team. And I'll take just a minute here and introduce that, what that looks like to you. So for starters, we got the community development division, which which houses, you know, right now, all of our, all of our planning and and community permitting and development. Until January 1, when the reorg structure that Greg has outlined for you, right now, engineering also falls under that division. Also, housing falls there. All of that reports up to Mr. Dan Folk. And and there's a lot to be said in that division. It's a very large division. We've got management services, which is really all things finance, revenues and and monies coming in, expenditures and and monies leaving, also handling our our business licenses and and general customer service. It's all happening there in management services. And that falls under the directorship of Mr. Rick Tatter, who also serves as the community's, as the city's treasurer. We have water services, a newly designated name that that changed over the last couple of years. But the intent of that change now, water services, is to encapsulate all things water. Right now, Ryan Roberts is serving as acting director, and we are in the in the throes of a recruitment process to fill that director seat permanently. But all things water really means all things water. We've got potable water, wastewater, storm water, and reclaimed water, all housed under that service. So there's a there's a lot there. And then and then the newly created engineering and capital improvements division. You, as a council, through our city manager, receive monthly updates on all the capital projects throughout the city. There's a lot going on for the benefit and and overall improvement of our community through engineering and capital. Our new our new director is our city engineer, Mr. Rick Barrett. Again, just a real pleasure to serve with these individuals. And then last, but certainly not least, is our information technology division. And and that's led at the helm by our our director, Mr. CJ Perry, a wealth of experience and knowledge collectively within this team. And it's, again, it's a privilege to be able to work with them in providing services to the community. Thank you, Greg.
And thank you, Shane. And since we're introducing by name, which I think is entirely appropriate, thanks for doing that. Two quick comments. I would like to note that economic vitality is led by Heidi Hansen, and sustainability by Nicole Antonopoulos. And of course, we all know our city clerk, Stacy Salzberg, the two deputy city managers. And then we just heard from public affairs manager, Jessica Drum. The second comment is, many, if not all, but but certainly most of these divisions will be before the new council introducing themselves and talking at greater length about their their function and the important things they have going on. We're going to queue that up in the weeks ahead. So you'll have a much greater acquaintance with with each of them. And Shane, did you have another comment?
Thank you, Greg. I didn't want to interrupt your flow. I just, I didn't want to let the team down either. And I failed to mention my two, my two adjectives. And I
Oh, yes, please.
I think I'll just throw that out there. I too asked my spouse, the two words that came first and foremost was mindful and dedicated. Thank you.
Mindful and dedicated. Great. I guess I'm in my own sphere then with noisy chaos. Thank you for sharing that. Excellent. Stacy, may I share the screen and I'll try to get us back on track time wise?
And Greg, I was just going to say, we've got five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to hustle. And Okay, hopefully you're seeing the role of staff in front of you. I'm going to speak really fast and we'll see if we can get back on track. We, when talking about the role of staff, and again, this is taking it to a much higher level. This is not so individualized or personalized. Our role primarily is to assist council in setting community priorities, implementing council policy decisions, and of course, overseeing and running the operations of the city, the day to day stuff. And that includes administration of the budget, personnel management, of course, emergency services, law enforcement, court administration. The courts lie a little bit autonomously of the city administration, as they should, representing the judicial branch, overseeing utilities, infrastructure and facilities, community outreach and engagement, community development, economic vitality. And that's a good sampling, but it's not an exhaustive list. What underlies all of this? We talked earlier about continuity, but I'm going to frame it a little bit more importantly than that, which is the expertise and the experience and the institutional knowledge that comprises our staff. And that becomes profoundly important as we serve the council and as we inform the many important policy decisions that the council takes on. A big component of this is preparing the official agenda and public record. A big component of this is preparing the official agenda and public record. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy. And Julie, I recognize that we're running a little bit overtime on this one, but I think we can add a few minutes to this administrative sphere and probably trim a few minutes off the policy sphere, if that's okay with you. I want to check in time-wise.
Sure, so we'll start, we'll plan to start this policy sphere at 3:35?
Yeah, that sounds perfect. And Stacy, that gives you about 10 minutes to walk us through the preparation of the agenda and the public record.
Thank you, Greg. Bear with me just a second as I get my presentation going here.
That's perfect. So maybe I'll just mention that Shannon has added to the comments to add names to the direct reports that she mentioned. Risk Management Director is Dean.
Kochenauer.
Thank you. Public Works Director is Andy Bertelson. Human Resources Director is Jeanne Gallagher. Interim Police Chief is Dan Musselman and Fire Chief is Mark Galliard.
Yes, and thank you, Shannon, for that. Very nice of you to, just so we're setting the stage on all the members of our leadership team here. Thank you. Are you ready, Stacy?
I am ready and lucky for all of you. I work very closely with Sterling Solomon. So much of what I will be covering today, he already kind of kicked things off. Our offices work still very closely together and oftentimes I feel like we share a brain. It must have something to do with our SS initials. So thank you, Sterling, for setting the stage for me. I will also start really quick with my two adjectives. Shane stole my first one, which is dedicated. And then in honor of Mr. Clifton, I'm going to go with noisy adaptability, which has been kind of the mantra these last few months. So moving into my presentation, I'll talk a little bit about the public record. So the official and permanent records of the city are maintained by my office. For those new incoming council members, if you haven't had an opportunity yet to come by and see my vault, I encourage you to make some time to do that. We've got some pretty cool records in there. But a big part of the official record is the record of all of our meetings. And so this would include the minutes of our meetings as well as all of our agenda packets. Those, both of those documents are created, again, by my office and they document the official actions of the city council. The minutes provide a summary of the discussions and capture all of the action that is taken. So all of the motions and the votes. And then the agenda packets, as we've kind of touched on earlier, really contain all of the information of the action that's needed by council. So that includes things such as contracts, background information. You'll see, and your packets are quite large. And the intent of that is to really provide you with as much information as we can to help you be successful in your decision-making. Detailed minutes are posted on the city's website following council approval. But action summaries are created and posted much earlier than that, usually a day or two after the meeting. And those action summaries just capture, you know, who made the motion, what the motion was and how that vote came out in the end. So agenda packet creation, again, is a long, can be a long process. It is ongoing. It never seems to stop. And typically, it can span the course of about two to three weeks. So every agenda item that is created goes through a routing process so that all of our various sections and divisions are able to review those. They all have to run through the city attorney's office for final legal review. And what you get at the end is the packet that I release on Fridays. Again, they're intended to provide as much information for you as possible to make informed decisions. And they are distributed digitally and are available on our website. We do create a draft agenda of the voting meeting about a week in advance and those go out with our work session agendas. So for those of you that have been following our council meetings, you'll note that on every work session agenda, we have a review of our draft agenda for the next week's voting meeting. And really, this is an opportunity for council to have some extra time to review the actions that are being asked of them for those voting meetings. The area on the work session agenda provides a public forum to kind of ask questions. But you're certainly not limited to asking questions only within that meeting. If there are any questions that you have or concerns, you can certainly reach out to staff to clarify those. But we wanted to have a formal space for you to ask questions if things come up at that work session. Really, at the end of the day, staff is here to help. That is our job. We want to do everything we can to assist you in your decision-making and so we encourage you to ask those questions. So our regular city council meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. And as I mentioned, these are our business meetings. So this is where official actions are taken. We take minutes, excuse me, motions and votes on all items. We occasionally will have some discussion items on the agenda on those regular meetings where we will be seeking some direction, but it is primarily action being taken. Our city council work sessions are held on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. And as Sterling mentioned earlier, these are really just discussion and direction meetings. It's an opportunity for us to provide kind of details on things that may be going on or things that may be coming to you in the future for actual official action. So there's no motions or votes that are taken during these meetings. Executive sessions are held on an as-needed basis, but we do try to keep them on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. Again, it can happen more frequently just depending on the things that are going on in our world at the time. Sterling already talked about the reasons for going into an executive session. Those are very important to adhere to since those meetings are close to the public. So we must stick within those. There's nine reasons ultimately to go into an executive session. And they're still required. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
You're doing great. About 30 seconds left.
Oh, heavens. Okay, so we'll just move on a little bit. Public comment and participation. Public participation is at the beginning of the meeting. These are for items that are not on the agenda. Council is not able to dialogue with the speakers that are speaking under this particular heading. This is different to public comment, which is reserved for items that are on the agenda. And you can, as council, dialogue with these speakers if you've got questions for them. In our current situation, when we are operating virtually, we have set up an email where the public can request to speak. They send an email and provide their name, phone number and the specific item they're looking to speak on. And we will call them and patch them into the meeting so that they can provide those comments as needed.
And Stacy, Greg has graciously given you three of his minutes, if you like.
Okay, I'm trying really hard to get through these. We do hold retreats as we're, you know, doing right now. They are generally four to five times per year. We do them more focused on goal-setting, orientation and coaching, such as what we're doing today, and also budget, which we will do tomorrow. And again, these are meetings where there's no formal action taken. Okay, I think I hit it and you'll hear from me a little later, later this afternoon. Thank you.
You did hit it and I knew that we should not like cut you way short because we know what happens since you're in control of the mute button during the council meetings. We know the consequence if I get into the city clerk's doghouse, which has happened.
I try, I try to be judicious in that muting function.
I will resume if that's okay, Julie, and we will leave the administrative sphere and talk a little bit about, whoops, I got the, this will work. This will work just fine, the policy sphere.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. What is the role of council? In a nutshell, it's to make policy. And that's a truism through the years, but it's a very, very important role. There are things that go beyond that. We talked about that before when we were, when we had the little Venn diagram and we were talking about all the things that happened in that center of that diagram. But policymaking is truly within the council's sphere. And then we will talk a little bit about engagement with staff. I'll have Sarah Langley speak just a bit about state and federal advocacy. We'll end up, I think, very appropriately talking about meeting protocol. That is not the rules of procedure that Sterling talked about. It's a little bit more about time management. And I think we had a good articulation of the fair items. Well, we might add a little bit more, Stacy, about CCRs and you can elaborate upon the fair items as well. If we talk about the policy-setting arena, then you can, and this is a gross oversimplification, but you can break that down into reactive versus proactive. And then we'll talk about the legislative agenda, again, that will involve Sarah. The passing of ordinances and resolutions. Sterling talked about that previously in terms of the mechanics of it and the formulation of community priorities. Sarah will talk a lot, Sarah and Shane, Julie, will talk about that tomorrow with respect to priority-based budgeting. But all of these lie within the policy sphere. If we were to graphically look at the reactive policymaking model, it might look something like this. We have a problem. Houston, we have a problem and there's a proposal to fix it. And there are alternative proposals that might come to the table and they're analyzed. And out of that emerges a decision and out of that comes the implementation. And then maybe over time, we evaluate. I was giving this thought when I put this slide together and I thought of a beautiful example of the reactive policymaking model. There's been many of them, by the way. But when that occurred over the course of past year was that of animal keeping, the infamous goats and chickens discussion. And not to make light of it because it was a very, very important community discussion and one that consumed many meetings. And it, a problem arose and the problem being there was, you know, a desire to raise poultry and some of the other things and we did not have allowances for that to happen. And it was not, you know, we were going against some of our sustainability objectives and so on and so forth. And many people in the media right now would recall, we had several meetings on this. And it was, I just, you know, I sat back and watched the whole thing and I just thought it was a remarkable illustration of the reactive policymaking process. If we were to then go to the proactive process, it would be a little more simplified here where the elected officials, generally in accordance with their goals or the community priorities, come up with policies and they are formulated and usually with a lot of counsel, or pardon me, staff assistance. And then it in turn shifts to the administration. And there's a circular relationship there. That policy continues to get revised over time and implemented over time. What might be a good example, and there are many here, of course, anytime we talk about master planning and maybe even strategic planning or neighborhood planning, we are kind of in this realm where we are proactively planning for our future. The JWP, the John Wesley Powell Corridor Plan comes to mind on this. A very proactive policy process, looking ahead at what the opportunities are for that particular part of town. And it's been a wonderful discussion and will continue to be such in a proactive way. Legislative agenda, we're shifting here now from looking from within the community and looking beyond the community. Sarah Langley, would you be able to chat a little bit about the regional, state and federal advocacy and how that looks and what lies ahead?
Certainly, Greg, and I will just go ahead and share my screen because I have one quick slide for the group. So let me do that.
And Sarah, if you're able and you don't mind, we'd love to see you.
Yes, we need to hear two things about you, Sarah.
Oh, yes, of course. Let me just, let's see, is that working in present mode now?
I think yes.
Great, all right. And can you see me?
Yes.
Yes.
You're right across the hall.
I know, we're about 20 feet from each other. So hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Langley and I am a management analyst in the city manager's office, focusing primarily on intergovernmental affairs. I would say two things that I at least strive to be would be inquisitive and kind. So those are my two words. So today I will briefly share kind of the key activities of the intergovernmental affairs program, the key partners that we work with and some upcoming events that we have. So the general purpose of the program is really advocating for the interests of the city of Flagstaff, both at the state and federal levels. At the federal level, the city is represented by a firm called Nexus Consulting, specifically by Bob Holmes and Anna Ma. And their pictures are on the screen so you can kind of put a face to a name as they won't be joining us today, but you will be meeting them soon. So work at the federal level mainly revolves around direct communication with Arizona's elected representatives in Congress. And that's really to let them know, you know, what the needs of the city of Flagstaff are and how we think those needs could be addressed by upcoming legislation. We also work to secure federal appropriations and grant funding for the city's various projects. And then also the city is a member of the National League of Cities, which advocates on behalf of cities across the country on pertinent issues. At the state level, we are represented by a firm called Elevated Advocacy, specifically by Todd Medexka, who's also kind enough to share a photo with us. And work here mainly involves around advocating for bills that would benefit the city and further our priorities, as well as opposing bills that might, you know, detract from our priorities or might harm our residents. We also lobby the governor's office and other branches of state government, including the Arizona Corporation Commission. And then additionally, the city is a member of the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, which provides a lot of expertise on legislative issues facing cities all around Arizona and they also advocate on our behalf. So those are some of the key activities that are carried out by the intergovernmental affairs program. Myself, Bob and Todd will all be back in front of you on January 12th during that council meeting to set the council's 2021 state and federal legislative priorities. And then we will use these priorities to kind of guide our efforts throughout the upcoming state legislative session and in working with the new incoming administration at the federal level. So that is all I have. Be happy to take any questions and I will stop sharing my screen here.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anybody have any questions of Sarah? And as she mentioned, there's a presentation coming your way in January as well. Not seeing any. Sarah, thank you. And just so we all know too, we occupy separate offices here. And while we're in our offices and consistent with city reentry protocol, we're okay being unmasked. When anybody enters our offices, the masks come on. And certainly when we're in any common spaces, same comment. Stacy, thanks for taking the driver's seat on this. I think we're on time here and we will have great opportunity for questions and/or public comments. The thing we're going to wrap up here with might, it's all been very important, but this one should be a little thought-provoking for the newly elected officials and a good refresher for all of us. And that is, what's the, what's the protocol for council elected officials to engage with staff? Well, here's the answer. And this one is a bit tailored to our organization. I want to preface my comments by noting, this is not a cookbook recipe that we follow here that you'll see from one jurisdiction to the other. Other organizations do things differently. Here in Flagstaff, we encourage council to reach out to staff for information at any time. It's a bit of a free, don't need permission sort of thing. Not a lot of structure to it. Why do we do it that way? Because it totally fosters a good flow of information, number one. And number two, it's an efficiency. The more you're able to exact the information you're seeking individually, and we're talking about in compliance with open meetings law, but one-on-one with staff, even two-on-one. You're doing so without occupying time at the dais sometimes and that is an efficiency. So we can keep the agendas a little bit more on point. And frequently, council will want information. And frequently, that information will address their curiosities or questions or concerns in advance of the council meetings and make those meetings more efficient. So we embrace that. We, as a matter of courtesy, ask that you notify management of those communications, but you don't need our permission. So that's a courtesy notification and frequently... So that's a courtesy notification and, and frequently we'll just get copied on an email saying, hey, I'd like to meet with so-and-so to talk about such and such. And we're like, yeah, cool, that, that sounds great. Uh, let us know if there's anything we can do to assist. Um, there may be times where management, and I'm speaking of, of all of us collectively again, that may want to be a part of that discussion out of interest. Uh, but it's not necessary. Uh, and we, we don't want staff to, we want to invite staff to have a, a rapport in an open dialogue with council and we want to invite council to do the same. Uh, so we're a little bit uh, easier than some organizations, uh, and just bear that in mind. It, that these things may change again over time, but this is the current methodology and one that I think has served as well. Uh, here are the do's and don'ts. As you're communicating with staff, uh, please avoid anything that would translate into an allocation of resources or a delegation of tasks. Now that would give us an asterisk and, and that is be judicious. Uh, this doesn't mean you can't ask anything that, that might not result in a task. Of course you can. The devil's in the details. If you ask for a huge uh, aggregation of data, that's going to consume a lot of staff time. Uh, that's one thing. If you're asking for something that might just involve a little bit of uh, some, some quick research, that's another. We don't have hard and fast prescription on this. We ask you to exercise uh, judiciousness and, and uh, thoughtfulness in this. If it becomes a problem, then we'll talk about it. But until then uh, those are the parameters. Again, back to an earlier comment, think of staff from a budgetary perspective. You are um, you're spending tax dollars when, when you're taking staff time. Uh, so uh, in all cases, we're very mindful of, of the dollars that we spend and, and the appropriations that we make. And this should be looked upon no differently. Stace? Staff presentations to council. Now we're flipping it around. Uh, how does, how does staff interact with council? Well, uh, at the dais is, is a big part of it and that presentation, all those presentations are intended to inform. And, and I think staff does a, a rather remarkable job and I'm, I'm so uh, impressed uh, at how the presentations have, they, they've always been good, but they've actually been taken to a very higher level and um, they, they are, are there to provide familiarity and knowledge prior to policy adoption. So back to the animal keeping thing, there was a lot of that going on. Lot, a lot of, pardon me, analysis and information being shared. Excuse me. The uh, here are the parameters, the, the do's and don'ts for staff. Uh, we are here to inform, we are here to even at times recommend. But we uh, we are not here to advocate or to steer outcomes. In the policy arena, council functions in a very important capacity. Uh, if that becomes uh, driven by the staff, that's never a good thing. Um, so we are here to provide you our expertise and, and to uh, maybe give you a nudge as to a recommendation, but in the end, it's a council decision. Uh, it would be appropriate to have policy discussions, as I noted in my example, span several meetings. Uh, seldom are things wrapped up in one meeting. Um, and that's the way it should be. Frequently uh, staff may uh, employ the use of studies, surveys and data to assist. Sometimes council may ask for that information. Our mayor, we know, is very data oriented. Uh, we take note of that. Um, so we will do our best to make sure that these policy discussions are informed with very good and meaningful data. The presentation should be inclusive, meaning we like to have more than one person present, like we're doing this afternoon. Uh, they should be informative and they should be succinct. Stacy? Responding to citizens, uh, Jessica, can you chat about the Jessica Drum, can you chat about this briefly? And I think we're still doing good time-wise, but give, we, we broached this subject before, but if you would like to give it just a little bit of an elaboration here uh, using what you have on the screen, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so as our um, ongoing and I'm sure now new council members know, we receive quite a um, significant amount of email traffic on a wide range of issues. And those topics sometimes are things that the city has jurisdiction over and sometimes they're not. Um, city staff, myself and Sean in particular, work to, we're copied on the mayor and council email address. So when you get those emails to council, we do not see them if they are sent to your email address directly though. Um, so when those, when those emails come in, we take a, a quick review of them. If they are an email that is requesting further information on something, if they are requesting um, something that, um, for example, recently I had one about a, a parking ticket that wasn't in the city's jurisdiction. Um, but we'll still work with the appropriate city staff to get a response out to that constituent and copy mayor and council. When those emails or in some cases phone calls are requesting um, a policy action, they want council to take up an issue, they would like you to act in a, a specific way. Those are, we leave those to the arena of the elected officials. So if there is an email that comes in that you think um, is under the administrative sphere that you would like us to, to respond to and we haven't yet, please um, always just reach out to Sean and I. Occasionally some of those emails get trapped by junk or by the spam filter, so we don't, I've realized recently, um, we might not see them right away. So if you see something and you want to make sure we get a really timely response on that, always feel free to, to reach out. Um, with Sean and I, we, we have a pretty good cover on it, but just sometimes um, one will go to junk. Um, the website and city social media, I know we covered this a bit. Um, we do have a uh, strategic communications plan for the city and under this, it does cover the use of city um, social media platforms and so not being used to promote a political candidate, a proposition or a ballot question. So, and that doesn't matter. That is the same rule regardless of if it is a issue that is um, being brought forward by the city. So it's a city proposition or if it is a outside political candidate, it doesn't matter, the city, we can't um, promote any of those on our social media candidates or our social media pages, excuse me. Um, and I know we also talked on the next bullet about the executive assistant chief of staff, they are available to assist you with a wide, wide range of activities that scheduling meetings, logistics, research, et cetera. Um, and I see Jim, you have a question.
Well, I guess you're done because I said a question after you're done.
Yes, I, I am. I, I went through that. I understand we're under a, a tight timeline, so I will, I will stay, I'm staying dedicated.
So I just wondered, like, sometimes I answer questions and I'm wondering if I should copy you on my response. An example is the one that you brought up where the woman or the man, whoever it was, got a, a parking ticket on private property. And I answered that and then about a day later you answered it. So I wondered if I should have um, maybe copied you on my answer. Incidentally, our answers were consistent.
That is always, um, that's always good news. And I would say that that choice is up to you. With that one, for example, the um, city staff was going back and forth um, with the constituent to make sure they understood where they had parked and what those issues might be and so that we could provide all of that information back to mayor and council. Um, we do get quite a few uh, parking emails, so this will be used as a, a primer for those. And so you're always welcome to, um, we try to still put out a response on those administrative ones to all of mayor and council, so that you all know that that has been covered. But you are also always welcome to reach out to those folks. Your answer was, like you said, right in line with what we were putting out. Um, sometimes our answers, if we're trying to track down additional information might take a little bit longer. And so you're always welcome to, to copy Sean and I, if, if you like, and if you think it would be helpful to the, the broader process.
Alright, so in the future, uh, probably start copying you more, but that doesn't mean I'm asking you to do anything. I'm just, you know, it's for info.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want me to copy both you and Sean or just one of you?
Um, sure, copy both of us.
No additional charge for copying two people?
Not at this time. We'll, we'll see.
All shut up now.
Depends on where the recession plan goes, Jim. I don't know, we'll see.
Just about five minutes.
Yeah.
We've got five minutes and I don't know if I missed possibly your two words.
Well, if I may, Jessica, because I love hearing your kids in the background, I, I have two words that I would suggest for you, which would be joyful mayhem.
Yes, yes. There's usually a dog or a child in the background. So I think that joyful mayhem, sometimes from the sound of what I was just hearing, one of them was a little less than joyful, but uh, I'm not in, I'm not on kid duty right now, so I'm not worried about it.
If you want to offer your own words, you're fine.
I, I think joyful mayhem and possibly constant chaos are, are probably the most appropriate right now.
Very good. You're in good company. Um, can I, uh, can I run with it? Jessica, are you finished?
Yes, I see the floor.
Thank you. Um, thank you so much. Uh, we're so proud of our public affairs section and the things they've accomplished over the last year. Meeting protocol. Uh, some of this is uh, the way it has been and I think uh, an articulation of what has been represented for the way things should be going forward. So it's consistent. First, uh, it's important to be formal. Uh, we use titles, we u- use uh, proper uh, formalities uh, in addressing each other, uh, and not first names. Retreats are okay for first names. Today was a great example. But other than that is title and last name. Uh, there's a lot of structure, as you've heard from Sterling, from Stacy. Uh, and, and certainly as you will see in our uh, city council meetings, they are structured and they need to be that way and the public appreciates it. They're also very inclusive. Uh, we, we will look forward to Mayor DC's uh, presiding of the meetings. Under uh, uh, former Mayor Evans, uh, there was a lot of emphasis placed on inclusion. Now, not everybody speaks up at the meetings and that's a personal decision with each council member. Uh, some like to listen, some like to engage. Uh, that's a personal decision, uh, but the mayor as presiding officer uh, usually uh, makes sure that, that those who want to speak do speak and sometimes invites those who are a little more quiet to, to participate, uh, just in the interest of hearing from them. Um, you know, a little bit of humor can uh, can help maintain a positive tone. I like the balance that I have seen and heard uh, with, with our council meetings. Um, we're formal, yes, we're, we're structured, yes. Uh, but every now and then there's a little bit of levity and uh, frankly, I think it's been in good balance. Always courteous, always respectful. Um, we had some very good comments by former mayor of AC this morning about that. What happens when we have uh, some, some very personal attacks coming to the council at the dais? It happens. Uh, or to the staff, that happens. Um, we as uh, community servants, uh, always need to be courteous and respectful uh, and, and handle those in a professional way. Uh, surprises may garner publicity, but they always uh, come at the risk of embarrassment. That's another way of saying let's please avoid surprises. If council has something they want to address, I would, or any of us would like uh, a heads up on that in advance so we can be prepared for it. Conversely, or, or similarly, I should say, we at the staff level will make it a point not to surprise council. Um, that's an important takeaway and I, I think over time we will all come to appreciate that. Surprises generally don't go over too well. Uh, the day, yes, please Julie.
Thirty seconds.
Yep, and we are wrapping up. Uh, thank you Julie. The dais is not the venue to address personal grievances. Uh, we also heard that from uh, former mayor Bavasi this morning. Um, there's another time and place for that, uh, but uh, the community generally does not want to uh, hear that and it does not reflect well upon us, so uh, we can talk more about that later. Um, next slide. Meeting protocol, large agendas dictate efficient meetings. We've had a long, large agenda today and we've got through it uh, even with, with several hours. Thank you so much for your time. How do we do that? Um, well, we have a facilitator sometimes. But really, uh, time management is key. Brevity is the soul of wit. And uh, it helps us a lot, uh, to, to adhere to brevity. Last slide. We talked about fair items, uh, Stacy, I don't want to be labor. Um, I will note that we do have some flexibility there. We exercised that this last week when there was a desire expressed or, or a night ago to have something placed on the agenda and we will accommodate. It doesn't always have to be the rigidity of a fair process. Do we have another slide Stacy? Or just, let's just get through these. Um, we did not talk about CCRs. Maybe Stacy, if you could touch on that in like thirty or forty-five seconds, we can wrap up here.
You got it Greg. So um, CCRs are city council reports. They're intended to be formal requests for information. Um, these documents are put together by staff. They're vetted through a handful of folks, including our legal team. Um, there really is not um, a prescribed process for requesting a CCR. It, um, we've seen it happen um, at public meetings. We've seen it happen directly um, as a request to the city manager. Um, but it's, it's, it's a, it is a very formal um, way of getting information. All of them are posted on our city website. Um, this is to allow for public viewing and then also future reference by um, council members. I would just like to note, um, due to the formality of this, we always encourage uh, a, a more informal means of obtaining information. So again, reaching out to staff. Um, and if, you know, sometimes staff will, will help guide that uh, decision to perhaps put together a more formal response. But uh, feel free to reach out uh, in that informal manner.
Thank you Stacy. Um, back to the fairs, we will be touching in with council uh, quarterly to, to talk about where we are with the fair working calendar. We're making progress on that also to, to make that more accessible, but the uh, council will have periodic check-ins to see where we are with, with the uh, working calendar and what's out there on the horizon. Always very important, so, so you know what staff is, is working on. Julie, um, I'm sorry that Stacy took us two minutes beyond the hour. I did my best, but you know, it is what it is. Uh, but we are at two minutes uh, after. You want to help us with the wrap-up?
Absolutely. So wherever you are, we have sixty people or, so give or take on the call. Wherever you are, will you all please stand and give a standing ovation to this amazing staff? Really, don't be afraid. Stand on up and here we go. What an incredible group to present to you, to to take care of the city, take care of everybody and keep everything running smoothly. Incredible, incredible job. You see the comments that are coming in, make sure you don't miss those. So we have a section for public comment and, and Mayor DC, I don't know if you would like to potentially run that component, but I would also like to encourage people to do what you're already doing uniformly, which is quite fun. Mark Wil- Wilson demonstrating the last one, putting in your own two words. Everyone on the call putting in your own two words. It's wonderful to just look, be learning about each other in this kind of way. Mayor DC?
Sure, thank you. And I really appreciate that too. Um, and council members, if you wanted to add yours in from earlier, I don't know if there's people on here that weren't on before, but I think that might be uh, really great. And I also want to note, I really appreciate everyone having their photos and when uh, those who uh, took out went on video, it's really nice, especially as uh, uh, new, new, newly elected to be able to put face to names and see smiling faces and I think this is, it's really good for um, our, yeah, building, building relationships in this crazy electronic world we live in. So thank you. Um, so we do have a, how many, uh, Ms. Althberg, how many uh, public uh, comments do we have?
Mayor DC, we actually have no comments, no public comments today. But it does look like uh, Mr. Solomon might have a comment.
Oh, okay, great, yes. Um, Sterling, city, yeah, city attorney Solomon.
Yeah.
We're done with our.
Just a reminder, since we did have a formal, oh, sorry, yeah, just a reminder, since we did have a formal request to have those items put in the chat column, they will need to be included with the minutes.
Not a problem. Thank you for the reminder.
Alright, I'm gonna add mine in here, but um, well, I got, uh, at this point, since there's no public comments, it, was there anything else uh, on the agenda? I don't have it right in front of me.
Yes, perfect. So now we are just wrapping up. So my question to you as the council mayor and council, how do you think we did today with curiosity and rapport? That was something we talked about earlier in the day. Can, can we get a little body language, thumbs up, thumbs down? How do you feel? I see council member Shimoney, council member Sweet. Wonderful and I think it was incredible too, just for us to stay engaged. People are really, there's more wonderful, all seeing everyone's faces. For us all to stay engaged, stay interested, uh, be developing um, knowledge and, and um, and it's wonderful, this little rapport component too. Sorry Stacy about those having to then go into the minutes. Um, tomorrow, what we have going on today, just to whet your appetite, everybody. When we come back at eight-thirty, we were, we're going to talk about the budget. Recession plan, general fund, priority-based budget. Isn't this exciting, wonderful? Lots of information. Adding in the, the laughter. Um, so it has been such a pleasure to be with all of you today. I hope um, everybody has a wonderful rest of your day. Anybody from the council or any staff that we have heard from previously, is there anything that you would like to share or say to the group while we've got everybody here? If so, why don't you just put a, a letter or something into the chat? If so, why don't you just put a, a letter or something into the chat so that it's not mayhem? Perfect. Uh, Greg, would you please comment?
Yes, and I know I'm going to put you on the spot, Julie, and, you know, I, I, I'm sorry if I did that during the intro, but you have been so masterful today and I watched you in action with our council this morning, you know, I was in a district room, but it was kind of cruel frankly, watching that, uh, on, on the, on the live stream, uh, and, it was wonderful, this, uh, team building, uh, all the exercises and the discussions, uh, and then that segueing into this afternoon and again tomorrow's budget thing, and I'm being facetious, that really will be, uh, uh, an important and very informative discussion tomorrow. Julie, I just want to thank you on behalf of the entire staff, I want to thank you for, um, leading us today and facilitating and man, we covered some ground and we were able to do that because, uh, you kept us on task. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, my pleasure, but I feel like I'm just this much helpful, you're all just doing an incredible job together, thank you. And a comment, council member Shimoney?
Yeah, I was gonna say this, I was gonna say the same thing, Julie, just, you, you rocked it today, you crushed it, thank you so much for, for helping to facilitate and, and thank you to Mayor DC for a great day. Thank you, everybody.
Excellent, wonderful, is anyone seeing any comments that I might be missing? I don't think so. Wonderful day, everybody. Um, Greg, how do you feel if we don't go all the way until 4:30?
I feel just capital. Let's, uh, let's call it good.
Sanguine?
You know, that's time management, uh, and it's by, is time management by example. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful, so when we come back tomorrow, we'll have the same energy, it'll be the morning, so as Sterling said, we won't be, be, um, having the after lunch feeling. Thank you, everybody, for, for being present and I think that's a wrap, we'll see you all tomorrow, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.